Okay, before we start our meeting, Sergeant at Arms or designee has the front lobby been attended to ensuring public access? And are we ready to proceed with this meeting? Mr. P. Bruno? I see no one here.
Two. Okay, we're good, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good afternoon. We are, today is Monday, March 7th. We are here for a school board workshop. The time is 12:01. And today on the agenda, we have Elementary J name recommendation for 30 minutes. We have the agenda review of March 8th, which will be approximately 60 minutes. And we also have, I apologize, oh, strategic plan update, which is 120 minutes. Today sitting in for us, we have Dr. Carlin that will be here until Dr. Savage arrives. We have Ms. Gittens, I believe, is on the phone. Ms. Gittens, are you online?
Yes, I just got my thing.
Thank you. And Ms. Morgan is not with us today. She is not feeling well, so we wish her the best. Hope she feels better. And so in saying that, we will go ahead and begin. And Ms. Lancaster, if all of you would please introduce yourself before we start the workshop. Thank you. I don't think your mics are on.
Yeah.
All right, you hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm Butch Swank. I am a nearby neighbor of Elementary School J and a community member, I would say.
Thank you.
All right, well, good afternoon, Board members. Dr. Carlin, good to see you up there. And Mr. P. Bruno, thank you for having us present on the recommendation for the name of our new elementary school in Lehigh Acres. And the remainder of our ad hoc committee, we're very thankful for Butch for joining us, but let me go through the names of those that were on our ad hoc committee. We have Ms. Shiona Jackson, who's a parent of a Mary Lakes Elementary student. Ms. Carolyn Peplow, Executive Director of Lehigh Community Services. Mr. Rick Anglikis of a Lehigh Business Leader. Katie Hoover with the Lehigh Acres Municipal Services Improvement District. Damon Scheller with the Lehigh Acres Kiwanis. And Ms. Marcia Burr and Dr. Shannon Johnston are Executive Directors who oversee our elementary schools. And staff that help facilitate, or myself and Ms. Eva. Lauren Stillwell, Rob Spicker, Adam Malloy, Cindy McClung, and Ryan Hudek.
All right, thank you.
So we just wanted to do a quick overview of where we are today. So we deployed our survey back in December to take name ideas for Elementary J. We received 300-plus submissions, which we organized into categories of similar entries. Our ad hoc committee met in December to review the names, compare them to board policy, and narrow down the list to six, which we presented to the board and gained consensus during the January 25th briefing. Those six names that were moved forward were Amanecer Elementary, Roberto Clemente Elementary, Thomas Edison Elementary, Gerald Gould Elementary School, Lee Ratner Elementary, and Sunrise Elementary.
So when we did the poll, after we approved the list of names that would be polled, we had a major, we had a diverse group of parents, students, district employees, community members, and others. But you can see that the majority were students and the majority were English-speaking, with a small percentage Spanish-speaking. Then we, we asked in the survey, not for your only, but we asked you to rank the six names, so there is a weighting of those. It's a weighting of the rank, the number that they ranked it, plus the number of times it would have been presented somewhere in the survey results. And when you look at the ranked, the ranked distribution, Sunshine Elementary was first, followed by Amanecer Elementary, Thomas Edison, Roberto Clemente, Lee Ratner, and then Gerald Gould was the last of the six. When we brought this back to the committee, the committee further discussed the rankings as well as the six names. And we ended up with three names that we would like to present to you. We decided not to do Roberto Clemente and Thomas Edison for two reasons, both of them not having a connection to Lehigh, and also because Thomas Edison is close to Edison Park Elementary, which already exists in the district. Then we looked at Sunrise Elementary, which, as I mentioned, was the top-ranked school in terms of the poll, but we feel like Sunrise and Sunshine, or at least the committee felt that the Sunrise and Sunshine were too close together and that it would cause issues with a confusion between the schools, not only in the community, but more importantly, in the emergency management services, emergency services. People might get confused as to which school that they were looking to send emergency services to. So at that, the committee forwarded three, looked at three names closely, and I'm going to turn to you.
Okay, so the, so we basically settled on Amanecer Elementary, simply because if close to 50% of the population in Lehigh at this point, at least around there, is Spanish-speaking, the Sunrise is just, you're going to have thousands of conversations every single year, confusing conversations. Sunrise, it just, it made no sense. So I mean, geographically speaking, that's the road it's on, great. So I don't know who the genius was that came up with Amanecer, but I think it's great because the 50% of people that don't speak Spanish will add one word to their vocabulary, and we're basically keeping in kind of alignment with the kind of voting preferences. And then the, the other names, the Gerald Gould and Lee Ratner, were both primarily responsible for the actual infrastructure and development of Lehigh Acres in general. Prior to that, and my personal favorite that I liked was, Lehigh Acres, before it was Lehigh Acres, was actually called Lucky Lee Ranch. And so I liked Lucky Lee Elementary. I think it makes no sense, no high school kid, a self-respecting high school kid wants to go to Lucky Lee High School, but Lucky Lee Elementary sounded cute. So we also wanted to just plant the seed for the board in the future, some of these names, the Gerald Gould or Lee Ratner and Lucky Lee Elementary, if you could consider in the future as potential names. And I think the board, excuse me, the community members invited, do an excellent, did an excellent job, because, you know, Roberto Clemente, Thomas Edison, obviously very admirable people, but, you know, have nothing to do with Lehigh Acres. So we wanted to do something that was actually community-centric. So that's how we've arrived at the Amanecer, and I feel like it's, it was a community input and then the, kind of the stakeholders there, kind of filtered, and that's precisely why we settled on Amanecer. And then, speaking of the school in general, and I know I'm getting off topic for a tiny bit, but I do want to reiterate, because we talked about this at the very first meeting, that's a one-way in and out of that school right now, is a middle school. And if we're going to build an elementary school, it's going to compound the road issues essentially. Sunrise basically deadens into a canal, and then other side of the canal is the other part of Sunrise. So I'd just like to throw in there, if the board could consider in the future, looking into whatever the infrastructure needs are to get a bridge. Katie Hoover, who serves on LAMSID, the governmental entity, LAMSID, said that they are more than willing to work with you guys to get something done in terms of getting that bridge built. But I do feel like if we're going to double the population of kids going in there, it means we're also going to double the parents and traffic in and out of there. If we could split it off and have two neighborhoods basically funneling the kids in there versus just one, I think you're going to have a happier community there. And plus, I think it also makes a lot more sense to have more than just one way out of that school. So that's my two cents. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I want to, the reason that there's a connection between Amanecer and Sunrise is because in Spanish, Amanecer is sunrise. So we kind of alluded to it, but we didn't say it specifically, and I wanted everyone to be clear as to why there's a connection between Amanecer and Sunrise. It is sunrise in Spanish.
I don't know, I forgot that. Thank you very much. It's a critical component to the name.
Well, thank you, Mr. Swank, and thank you to all the committee members who helped us here, so that we can present on behalf of the committee the recommendation for Amanecer Elementary. The next step is for you to have a discussion regarding the naming of Elementary J and come to a consensus hopefully today, so that we can get this on the March 29th agenda. As you all know, we put a hold on your calendars, and we're planning for the groundbreaking on April 20th.
Thank you.
And we're happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Great, thanks. Ms. Patrico.
So Ms. Eva, I don't know whether you know, but when you were going over Slide 3, you referred to it as Sunshine Elementary, which I think perfectly illustrates the problem with Sunrise Elementary. I fully support your recommendation. I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Gittens? Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, hi. First of all, I want to say thank you so much to the committee, and especially the community members that took their tongue to participate, and we really appreciate it. From what I've heard in the community, the Amanecer is an excellent choice, and everybody seems to be in favor of that.
Are you, was that it on your comments? Ms. Gittens?
(laughing).
Just making sure.
I love how you sound so surprised that I was short a speech.
Okay.
But anyway, no, I just wanted to say thank you, and I agree with the Amanecer. I also think that we need to have a lesson on how to pronounce it correctly.
Amanecer.
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 As Mr. Swank said, as he mentioned earlier, that's going to give people who do not speak Spanish a new, a new word, right? Perfect.
Excellent, yes.
So, Ms. Fisher, thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Fisher?
And I just wanted to thank the, the community committee and staff for the work that they've done on this, and I think it's an excellent choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Ms. G.
I just want to thank everybody as well. I love the process involving the stakeholders. I think that's so important. And I'm gonna, Amanecer, I'm going to try really hard, because I'm the one that would be the one that will say it wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Oh.
You're the only one, so go ahead.
Ditto to what everybody said. By this time, it's all been said, so thank you, and I think it's a good choice.
Okay, so thank you. So in, so now you would like consensus regarding the, the name. So Ms. Gittens, what is your consensus? Thumbs up?
I definitely, I'm, I'm, definitely, I agree, yeah.
So may we have consensus, please? So that will be six, six to zero. So yes, consensus for that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Can I throw in one more thing from a, from like a process?
Your time is up. No, go ahead.
Well, the, I, it was interesting, the naming, and working with Mr. Spicker and Ms. Stillwell. It sounds like the naming process is, like quite literally, a process is still in development. And I, I did feel like there were some hiccups there in communication, but I will say, I think we had good communication. You know, a lot of the times, issues really are just fundamentally based on miscommunication, bad communication, and we're able to work it out, and I think the district does have a pretty good protocol going forward. And so, I mean, anything is going to be, it's hard to do anything from scratch, and so appreciated the, the kind of reciprocity and listening to us and hearing our input and understanding it. Because again, I mean, Roberto Clemente, Thomas Edison, admirable people, but we want the kids of Lehigh to be proud of their schools, and we want something that is Lehigh-centric. So, you know, the process was a little bumpy, but I do think the end result was good, and I think the next time that this happens, it will be even better. So just want to say, A, thanks for including us, and B, thanks for listening to us.
No, and thank you for your comments. That means a lot. So thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so next on the agenda is our, is Dr. Carlin.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Chair and Board members. Good afternoon. We're here this afternoon to go through the agenda review, and we have staff here that are ready and able to answer those questions, so let's dive right in. We're going to start with the consent agenda items F3 and F4, and the question is, would you please provide us with what was paid to RSM in the prior scope of work? I'm concerned this contract will not be enough. They need to have the full autonomy to do their job per statute. I would not like anything to, or anyone, to impede their ability to do their work. And so providing our answer today is Kelly Letcher from Budget.
Okay, and before, before Ms. Letcher speaks, Ms. Givinelli, that was your question. Can you elaborate on exactly what?
I just want to make sure that this, $140,000, I think, is not enough money, what the need is, so for the scope of work. And I think that between them being involved in the White, the Lighthouse, you know, complaints and so forth that comes through, that they need to be on it. I just want to make sure that we realize that it may cost more than $140,000 for RSM.
Okay, thank you.
Based on what they, what we paid to them in prior, that was my concern as well.
Ms. Letcher, how are you?
In FY '20, we paid them $73,000, and in FY '21, we paid them $125,000.
But then again, Ms., Mr. P. Bruno, this is what they had sent us. This came through them, and the, the estimate was based on what they've sent us, correct?
So it reflects the projects that they're going to be looking into, as agreed to through the audit, and then they requested an additional, well, we, I requested that they add the Lighthouse fraud, waste, and abuse of $10,000. And it's quite possible it may be more than $10,000, because we just don't know how many claims that will come in. However, that was added to it.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Fisher, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
I was just going to ask Ms. Letcher if she could please repeat the first number.
The total was $198,000, $73,000 in FY '20, and $125,000 in FY '21.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, are there any other questions regarding this?
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, did you have anything? Ms. Gittens? Okay. Dr. Carlin?
Okay, thank you very much. It's my understanding, I just want to clarify with the Board Chair, that we are going to ask Ms. Gittens questions at the end. That was a request, just to confirm.
Ms. Ms. Gittens had asked that because she was driving in, so she wanted to see if we could take her questions to the end, so she could be here for her questions.
Okay, excellent. So just so the whole Board knows, we, we will be moving on to item I-4, so that we can accommodate that request. So if you skip through a couple of pages of your agenda. So I-4 is approval of the monthly budget report for the period ending January 31st, 2022. We have two questions, one of which is Ms. Gittens, so we will hold that particular question. But there is a question from another Board member that says, "There are significant changes and reallocations of funding for Veterans Park remodel, East Middle School, and South K8 School Quadruple A. Would you please provide a summary explanation of the movement of funds, particularly A? Also, these are significant changes in the impact fees, South Zone, so for a future board briefing, an update of the allocation of reserves." My computer just jumped, my apologies. Would be appreciated. And then secondly, finally, county-wide reserves have increased substantially. Same question as above, a board briefing on the county-wide reserve sources and uses. So Ms. Letcher, anything that you would like to comment relative to question A, 1A and B?
Sure. So the adjustments for the Veterans Park was a Phase 2A cost estimate that was brought to the Board on January 11th, and we were just aligning the budget with what was approved by the Board at that time. The East Middle School, we've reduced that, the project is, is closing down, and as it's closing, we're pulling the funds back. And as the encumbrances get done and the funding and the payments are made, anything remaining will be pulled back at that time. The other one was Quadruple A, and right now, we're pulling any unspent dollars from Quadruple A back. And I think construction is still working to find out what our final cost will be for that. And once they're done and their purchase orders are closed, we'll pull those funds back as well. And then we'll be reallocating next year through the budget process, the funds that were pulled back. The next one had to do with the impact fees in the South have increased, and they increased by the amount that we pulled back for Quadruple A, because we had initially paid for some of that out of the impact fees until we got our COPS. So that, that was increasing by the Quadruple A amount. The second question had to do with the reserves increasing, and I believe this was Ms. Morgan's question.
It is, I'm sorry.
However, they were really decreasing, so I'm not sure. I think maybe the number was looked at differently, but it was being decreased by the amount we added into the budget for the Veterans Park increase that the Board approved.
Okay, thank you. And I know that she'll be watching, she is watching, so if she has any other questions pertaining to this, I'm sure she'll get in touch with you.
Sure, no problem.
Okay.
And we'll be happy to put something together on reserves for everyone in the future.
That would be great, thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this?
Ms. Gittens just walked in. Do you want me to hang tight and answer her part?
Yeah, uh, yes, you might, you're there, yes.
Yes.
So Ms., Dr. Carlin, will you go ahead and?
Yes, so our next question was, "Please explain capital projects and other capital projects fund appropriations have changed to reflect adjustments and current cost estimates of the Board-approved capital projects. When there are changes in capital projects, please explain Quadruple A, $4.528 million."
Okay. I'll let her get caught up for just a second here before I answer, so.
Okay.
You ready? Okay, so the 4.528 was not just Quadruple A, that was actually, 1.6 of that was Quadruple A that we were pulling back. The other 2.9 was middle school MM funds that were unspent, were being pulled back, and that's the 4.5 adjustment that you see in that other capital projects.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, I know, I just wanted to catch your breath. I will, I will tell you what we're, as we're building next year's budget, just so you have an idea, what we're going to be bringing to you is not just the capital plan, and the next five-year capital plan, we're planning on bringing to you the projects we're in, that were in the plan, the amount that they were in in the current year, the amount that they're going to be in next year, and then the difference, so that you can see where those increases are as we go through the updated cost estimates of the projects.
Okay, if I may, if I can breathe.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to be a little bit late. Um, yeah, my, my thing, and I don't have it pulled up yet, was I know that there were funds, and I don't know exactly how much it was, that we said we had already spent on Quadruple A. And I didn't recall it being the 4.5, so that's why I was, one, I thought it was like two or three.
So I think they're still finalizing those numbers, and there's still purchase orders encumbered. The amount that we pulled from VPAA was the amounts that were not previously encumbered. So as soon as construction gets done with the, the information back and forth, and they get a total cost, and they reduce their purchase order or pay for the others, we'll pull the remainder back at that time.
Okay, and I, I think I was coming in, in the, when you were mentioning the VPAA and the Quadruple A.
Yes, the 4.5 million that you saw on that other, other capital projects on the budget amendment was actually two projects that totaled that. 1.6 of that was the Quadruple A funds that we pulled back, and 2.9 was the middle school MM dollars that we pulled back.
Okay, so 1.6 was Quadruple A?
Correct.
And how much was?
2.9 was the middle school MM.
And 2.9 was VPAA?
Middle school MM. That's the, the new Lehigh Middle.
Okay, what are we calling that?
It's Lehigh Middle, but on, on construction, it's MM still for us, though. But it's Lehigh Middle is that new one.
What is it to DOE?
Not the one on the VPAA campus. This is actually the Lehigh Middle new school.
This is for that addition of those?
This is for the new, no, this is not the addition. This is the middles, the new middle school that was just built.
Right, the new Lambs, what is now Lambs.
Yes, that, we were pulling back unspent dollars from that project.
And it was going to Quadruple A?
No, it was just being pulled back into reserves.
Okay, which gives, always gives me a question. We pull so much back into reserves.
So when we, so when we have a COPS, just so I can explain a little bit further, when we have COPS, if we don't spend it within a certain amount of time, we have a penalty for arbitrage for not spending the dollars. So what we do is, as they're done, we pull them back in, and then we use that money to pay the debt up to a certain amount, so that we don't have arbitrage charged to us. And so we're starting to pull those things back in, so that we can see how much we have.
Okay, sounds, sounds like a night-school class thing. All right, so that's where that 4.5 came from, and, and as everyone recalls, all I asked for was simplistically in the beginning, that if we had on the budget a certain amount, when that project's- when that project stopped, where did we move those funds, or how did that look? And that's all I was, how can we follow that trail?
So this is the first movement of funds, and we're just pulling it back into reserves right now.
Okay. All righty, I won't take up any more time, so I know where you are.
I have a question, and I'm sorry that, I apologize that I didn't send it in. So when we're looking at this, because I see Franklin Park, and I know people have been asking me what has taken place with that, and they feel across from James Stevens and the money, so I see some money there, but...
The initial part of Franklin Park's would probably have been for the architect of the Phase One, which is usually the architect fee and getting the stuff started. So that's what you would see in Franklin Park. And then when they get the next cost estimate, they'll bring that to you to move forward.
So that's what ES means, ES rebuild? ES, what does ES mean?
Which we're, I'm not sure where you're looking.
It's on their project name, and it just says Franklin Park E.O. Elementary School. Forget, I just said that. I did not ask that question, I'll take it back.
Okay, didn't hear anything.
Forget it, forget it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of those days. Okay.
All right, our next question is related to the consent for human resources, approval of personal recommendations. The first question, is there a database where we can see exit interview information and comments? And the second question is, will the chief engagement officer position be filled? So we'll look to Mr. Dotig and his team to provide that answer.
We are on J. Consent. We haven't gone back to the front yet.
Oh, okay.
It's J-1, Approval of Personal Recommendation.
Okay, we'll go back to the front page.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And so this was Ms. Gittens and Ms. Vaughn.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I would have been up here sooner, but I didn't know if we were going back to the other questions.
We wanted to see you first.
So the answer to the second question first, HR has not been advised to advertise the position, so I don't know if it will be filled or not. Regarding the first question, which is a great question, we don't have an automated process for collecting exit interview data, it's all manually done. So the survey data is compiled by HR using either Excel, some other software, or mixed methods of analysis, and then we provide it to the administrators, appropriate administrators and the board, as we did several weeks ago. So that's the answer to that question.
I, thank you, and, yes, I recall it had to be 2019 or sometime in there, where we were discussing on the dais about exit interviews and all of that. And I'm, here we are, what, two, three years later. And especially in our hiring and all of that that we're going through right now in this critical time, I don't know if anyone else has an appetite for it, but looking into a way that we can do this more streamlined and more effectively, that you don't have to go through and just put down each thing. So because past data dictates many times future progress in what you do, I just think it's such a very, very, very important piece in running of the district and running it smoothly. If we, and I'm not thinking of any department or any school in particular, but if you happen to have one area, department, or a school that tends to be losing people, we need to be able to quickly and efficiently know why that is and make that change. So, I mean, I don't know.
Ms. Jevonelli?
So wouldn't this be key to retention? I mean, to have the data, the information accessible, and then for it to be efficient? I think that's, I didn't realize that the information, it sounds like it's a little bit of a tasking to put the information together. Is it something that you can press a button and get the information?
No, it's not something.
So it's gathering, and it's, so it's spending time?
Yes.
Gathering to get the data?
Correct.
Which couldn't, shouldn't it be just like push a button and everything kind of goes together? Am I wrong? I don't know.
No, I don't know if you're wrong or right.
Where's Wayne getting sweaty out there?
I mean, I think she brings a great point.
He does make a great point, I agree with you. And I will endeavor with my folks to figure out a way to better automate the process. That's all I can say to you all. I wasn't here in 2019 for that conversation, so I'm not aware of it. I will tell you that the more pertinent information typically is if an individual writes a resignation letter. This exit information on a survey is asking several questions. Why are you leaving? And could you tell us more about why you're leaving? Sometimes the folks share it, sometimes they don't. But to answer your initial question, which may have been rhetorical, yes, of course that's important for being able to retain employees, for sure, absolutely.
And I'm just trying to think of what's effective and efficient for the people in HR doing the work. I mean, there's a lot of important things to be, you know.
There's essentially one person doing this work, so just so you know, right.
Right, so and then, you know, how long does that take someone?
It takes a while, yes.
You know, so I mean, some of it should be pretty much simple and at your fingertips, even if it's maybe not everybody's information. But, I mean, I think eventually people would, I think, a lot of people do surveys online, because they can do it at their own time, at their own leisure, in their own privacy, of their own home or wherever. So I think that having that, having that ability to do that would be helpful. We might get more people, you know, responding. So that's just my thought, thank you.
I think if I'm not mistaken, you do have that option, it's whether they fill it out or not fill it out.
Correct, yes.
So it's there, it's available.
We have no way to force an individual to fill out a survey when they leave.
Right.
Yeah.
Ms. Vaughn?
Oh, excuse me. This question, it's saying exit interview, because there is an actual interview as well, is there not with the principal?
Yes, we would hope a principal would interview an individual.
Okay, so we have, we would have two sets of data.
Correct.
This may seem off-base, but it's really not. Are we doing the 360 evaluations of principals at this point?
I would have to get back to you on that answer to that, I'm not certain.
I don't know that we are. Not to throw anybody under the bus.
Or Spyro said no, so I turned to him.
That's been something that, I mean, since way before I was on the board, when I was on CSI, things that was brought up, and it just has never, ever been, I mean, way before you were in in HR. And the elephant in the room here often is the school culture and climate. And certainly, someone who is exiting teaching, we would hope that somebody who is a veteran teacher knows that there are other worlds out there, and knows about climate and leadership at school level, et cetera. But there are going to be some people that are newbies that think, wow, this is awful, I'm just wanting out. So if there's a way to get that data on, you know, I mean.
Well, the survey, climate survey was just received back, so we are gathering that information from the climate survey, from each school.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you know that as many times as we say, this is private, this is anonymous, I guarantee you, there are at least 50% of the teachers or more, or of staff.
That are reluctant.
That say, no, and I don't want to burn bridges.
I understand.
And so there's really, with these exits, there's really, I agree with my colleague, there's a lot of data that can be gathered, and, you know, I think Ms. Gittens said about red flags of schools where you have mass exodus. I mean, we need to look at that. And again, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but if we have somebody that's running a school, and he or she has a mass exodus, we need to get to the bottom of it, and maybe a, you know, an interview in HR or?
I agree.
In a soundproof room somewhere. Anyway, I don't want to miss the boat on the very valuable data that we can get from this.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Jevonelli.
Honestly, I was just sitting here thinking way outside the box, what other districts do? Do they have a third party that ends up costing us less proportionately to do exit interviews and put a nice little neat bow on that whole process?
Right.
And I don't know if that's the case.
I think some of them do what we do. I will tell you, slightly off-topic but on-topic, we are also going to move forward with what we call stay interviews. Why are people staying? Because at this point in time, that's probably just as important as why people are leaving.
Well, and, you know, having been in the school system as a teacher for a while, you know, the surveys come out and you hear the moaning. And so I'm just thinking to get real true and good, hard, fast data, having a third party to do it. And it may be something that we ask, you know, RSM is our auditor, is there some type of an audit function, or is there something they know to help us? Because it is time-consuming for you guys as well, and, but it's necessary information.
Absolutely.
But thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ms. Jevonelli?
So Ms. Vaughn brought up something I think that is really key here. The 360 is really about accountability, and at the school level. And so I'm sitting here thinking, you know, what message are we sending if we're not holding the principals accountable to find out what's going on in their schools, and why we're not retaining teachers? Now, yes, it can be because of the pandemic, but if that's the case, that's the data that we need to be able to tell our story. So if we don't have the information, we can't tell our story, and we can't make changes that are needed, because if we don't know, you only know what you know. And you certainly don't know what you don't know, right? So, I mean, it's all about how do we, how can we do better? And the only way to do better is to have the information. So I don't, I don't know how we can force it, but we can force accountability on the principals to get the information. You know, maybe they don't want that information out there, but we can't make changes or make corrections without having the information. So I think it's really vital, because I want to send the message that we want you to, we want you to come here, we want you to stay. And the only way to do that is to make sure we keep asking the questions.
I didn't say that we don't have the information. The question was, do we have a specific way of collecting it? Is there a database where we can see exit interview information and comments? That's what I was answering.
And I agree, but I mean, it needs to be simplified, and I don't think it is. Back to one person.
Well, it could be automated, yes. I'm all in on that, I agree with you.
It seems like it's kind of dinosaur age for me. I mean, I just don't, I think the information should be at our fingertips, especially in this climate right now with, you know, we're about to, we're planning our next year, we're getting a new superintendent, and this is information that he doesn't even probably, if he, if we don't have it, he doesn't have it. And so, I mean, without someone doing a lot of work to get the information. And retention is just vital right now, and I'm not, you inherited this position, so I understand. But I just want to emphasize how important it is, and send the message out there to our teachers and our staff. And this goes right down to staff, not just teaching. I mean, this is everybody. We need, everybody's key player, is a key player, and we need everybody at the forefront, always, doing their best job that they can. Because at the end of the day, it's about educating our children, and that is entrusted to us. So, I mean, I just, I think it's back, everybody needs to be held accountable for what their job is. And that starts at every level of the district.
I think Dr. Carlin had something to share.
Yes, so board members, if I may, on behalf of HR and Academic Services, so we are hearing you, everything that you're sharing. I will tell you, my previous position, I had a great deal of information regarding principals and how they were doing, and we did have conversations at the school level. Just, I would like to share that on behalf of school development as well. The other thing is, we are hearing your requests for automation and making sure that we have this information at our fingertips. So we will ask staff to go back and have that conversation based on what we've heard you say today.
Thank you.
So that they can come back and let us know, you know, the areas that we need to improve upon and what we're doing relative to that. So we do hear you, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Did Ms. Vaughn, did you have your hand up? No?
Wait, did you? I have on my other question, Mr. Dotig already answered what you know, that it hasn't, you haven't been advised.
Advertised, correct.
So may I ask, Dr. Carlin?
Yes, ma'am.
So is there someone that will be filling in the role that Ms. Stillwell had, or what are we doing in this interim?
I can advise you on that. So Dr. Savage just asked me on Friday, myself, to provide executive support for the area of communications, and so that will be occurring until such time there's been a decision on the position. So thank you.
Great, that's exactly what I want to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gittens?
I just wanted to, I know you were ready to leave, right? You mentioned the stay interviews.
Yes.
Which is, I'm kind of, you know, on the fence with that. If we had to gather information about those that left, or use that valuable time gathering information about those that are here, those that are here are going to tell you it's all wonderful, because they want to stay.
Maybe, maybe not, right? I mean, some people stay for various reasons, but that has been commonplace, really, since the advent of, since the pandemic began. Why people are staying is, in some ways, just as important as why they're leaving. So I understand, because it does add another level of work in a division where we've lost people also. So I understand.
I think it's a good idea. Ms. Vaughn?
That just sparked something. At this point, yeah, isn't that awful? The longer people are there, the more that's, eh. How many people do we have now that are still grandfathered into that old, I forget what it's even called. I know I was, but.
Professional services contract?
I guess, the one, it's like, kind of like pseudo-tenure kind of.
PSC and CC continuing, we have.
Must be a very low number.
No, it's not as low as you would think, but it's much less than half of the bargaining unit now. Yes, much less than half, 2,000 or less.
Much less than half?
Yeah.
Okay, you might want to ask?
Yeah.
Their opinions.
That's a valid point. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Carlin?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're going to go back to page one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So let's take a look at item H-5, Approval of the Academic Affiliation Agreement with Animal Hospital of LaBelle. And the question is, which other schools have this partnership, and what's happening with the veterinary program at Gateway? And we have Mr. Everly and also Rita.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll let Ms. Davis also talk about the Gateway part of that for hers, but to answer the question, this is, Cape Coral Tech's the only school we have a veterinary program for right now. And it opens up the doors, because it's growing, it opens up the doors for Fort Myers Technical College with the expansions we have there. We're getting some students from the Alva, out east area. So LaBelle gives us an opportunity, they, the LaBelle Veterinary Program out there has offered us some hours there as well. We're looking for more in the Lehigh area. We roughly have about 12 to 15 affiliation agreements around the county, and counties right now that assist us. It's a growing, it's a growing certification in this growing field for us. So I've already been talking to Fort Myers Technical College on that, and that's one of the things that we'll be looking at once the expansions start. And we actually got a classroom for it, we can add it over at Fort Myers Technical College, too.
Mr. Everly, can you also tell them, because that Cape has been there for quite some time.
Yes, it's been there for, yeah, these are just, these are just more affiliation agreements to give our students the opportunity to stay closer to home, and not having to drive to one's area of Lee County. And the LaBelle Veterinary and Services offered and says, we would love to be a part of this, too. They're looking to hire people as well, being out east and the. Being out east and rural cultural areas that we have there, it, it helps, it makes sense. So that's why Fort Myers Tech's looking at this program. We know those numbers are going to grow.
Ms. Gettens?
So, so my question is, it's been a while, I think over a year ago that I took my tour of Cape Coral Tech. And at the time, they were talking about as well, the, the animal, you know, veterinary classes and all of that and expanding. So you mentioned that there are students from, you know, LaBelle, Alva, out east that go to classes in the Cape, but they can fortunately do their internships near, closer to home. What, what is needed as far as classroom to do veterinary? I mean, do you, you mentioned a classroom at Fort Myers Tech. Is it a classroom setting and then going out or do they need a whole, you know, lab set up or what, what do they need?
It's, it's actually all combination of all three. A, we need classroom space. Fort Myers Tech does not have that right now, but they're in that expansion process. They're past RFQ, they're already starting to put, you know, bricks and mortar down on that campus right now. So we need classroom space to make that happen. Number two is, it is a lab. And then number three is, is the affiliation agreements where they go work at those sites.
So how many, how many days a week do they go to this class?
It's a full-time program. Now, there's two different types. You have secondary, which is underneath, you know, Ms. Davis' Gateway, and then you have the post-secondary programs that, that actually gives you the certificate to be hirable.
So is there a possibility, and I'm jumping out of the box again, is there a possibility that students in the east zone that have the internship there could do, have their, their classroom piece, maybe once a week come to Cape to do the lab piece and save all of that transportation that they have to do?
Well, I, I think part of the problem is you got to have a teacher. You got to have the same teacher and you got accreditation, it has to be in a certified room, it's accredited and so on. It's not, is not as easy as having some, one day a week you go here and then finding a classroom somewhere else. Because any classroom that is used under our accreditation.
Has to be accredited.
It has to be in an accredited room, lighting, curtains, certain carpet, so many windows. It's, it's a process for any technical college and traditional college. I don't know if that's the answer because I cannot, I know it, it is starting to expand more of the program. I don't know if it's, two things, A, people may not want to drive that far, or B, we don't have, the numbers aren't so staggering compared to other programs that we have with these expansion projects that we are doing at Cape Coral Tech and Fort Myers Tech, that that is raising so much higher. CDL licenses, those types of things, we are going to be busting at the seams to do. And those are some of the things that we're trying to get done quicker.
And what's required for CDL? Do you just need a?
There's a.
A place to drive? I mean, I know you need a teacher.
Right.
We just need, you know, if you had an empty concreted area and a truck that was donated, could you do CDL?
Not just with an empty concrete area because that track has to be certified. So that is part of the expansion and I know we will be, I don't want to step over Ms. Colman, but I know we are going to be bringing all of that forward to you as an update where we're at for the post-secondary location, possible new site location. Part of that was, in that is a, for the Fort Myers or the Southwest Florida Public Service Academy, is a certified driving track for all of these disciplines. That's part of that.
Okay.
It, it won't only go for public safety and ambulance and so on, it could be used for our current bus in operations, could be used for our CDL licenses at nighttime, in the afternoons, working families and so on, can come do the CDL portion at night. So there's some opportunities there, but it has to be a certified, you can't just.
No, I, I get that part and I, I thank you for answering the questions. Everyone is, of course, reading the bubble over my head, so you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'll let Ms. Davis answer the other portion.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Veterinary assisting is available at Gateway High School. It's one of their top selected academies. There's 202 students enrolled currently and next year they'll be adding the next level of that. It's a four-course progression in high school to make it a complete program. So they have courses one and two because they are a new school and next year they'll be adding course three.
When can I take Pebbles there to get her groomed?
We'll work on that for, yes.
I mean, are they, I'm asking, are they doing that?
That's the, I don't believe they're doing so right now, but that is the plan to, to add that.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
So in the high school program, is there any certification when, when they graduate?
We have, yes, there's a couple of different ones. Sherry Sukovich at South Fort Myers High just recently got a more updated version, which is similar to what they offer at the technical college. And as you know, that's what we've been trying to do over the years due to capacity limitations is in order to provide the most opportunities for our high school students to get them right into the workforce, is try to replicate some of the post-secondary programs at the high schools.
But is, do they go and get an actual certificate or do they?
Yes, I believe it is a certified veterinary tech, I believe is the industry cert, but I can get the exact, I don't want to give you misinformation.
And then at the post-secondary, it's a higher level or?
Yeah.
I'm asking because this might be something someone I know is interested in.
Because of the amount of hours that are offered at these, at the, the high schools, just like the firefighter one, you can only do firefighter one up to for, for certain reasons, but to become a certified firefighter, you have to now come back and do firefighter two. It's a different type of certification, there's multitude and I could, we could provide those. There's multitude and it goes by job skill and then pay ranges or to that. I'm not 100% familiar who can clip nails and then who can, you know, who's washing, you know, the animals, but there are different ones. There are different certifications.
Yeah, I was just curious, coming out of our academy in secondary, what the difference If, if they have completed the academy in secondary, can they still go into the post-secondary?
Yes, they can.
For further certification?
They can further their certification.
Oh, okay.
I think what, what Ms. Davis and them are, and what they're trying to accomplish and they are accomplishing that is, is that these young men and women graduating to high school from that program can go get a job right away. Okay? And, and then if you want to continue your education and further along, you would be able to go to post-secondary and their own, if that's your track of, of life.
Okay.
So it gives, it gives them some career opportunities for, it's just like you're coming in as a basic teacher and all of a sudden you're a principal 10 years from now. You just continue your path.
And that's, that's great that there's a, actually can be a transition if they want.
We work well with that. There's a lot of recruitment that comes on and me and Ms. Davis works with, with that about recruiting these young men and women to our sites if traditional colleges are not in their path.
And that's, and that's what we want, them to come out of high school and, or maybe with a little bit of post-secondary and have a viable job that.
Yeah, that's just like our, we have a very successful, that fire program that we have in three schools and they finish fire one. And once they turn 18 and come out, they're finishing 230 more hours and they're a certified firefighter in the state. Come finish EMT with us and you can write a ticket somewhere in the state of Florida as a firefighter EMT.
That's great.
So that's, that's pretty much the part.
Thanks for clarifying, Courtney.
And Ms. Vaughn, thank you, that, I think that is a great question because there is a lot of confusion on that, you know, how you have that, you know, the trend to continue on, it's like, if they have the academy and they have their certificate, so why do they need to go here? So thank you for sharing that because I think people have that misconception of.
Yeah.
What happens now and where do they blend together?
What are you certified?
Yes.
To do? And I think people, our, our animals, our dogs and cats have become our fur babies now and, and I think there's a huge call for veterinary and grooming and all of that.
Yeah. Ms. Javonelli?
So this just led me to thinking about something else and this is not really on that topic exactly, but no, I think it's great, so thank you. But like, and this could be something you could answer later, but like a pharmacy technician, like is there something, do they get certified? I know there's that, and, and is that anything we offer at any schools to entry level to help transition into a job? I'm sorry.
Rita.
You take it for, for secondary, go ahead.
Just made me think.
We have a very successful program at Cape Coral High School, actually started by Dr. Spiro when he was the principal there. And we have affiliation agreements with local, you know, drug pharmacies and they can't get enough of our students fast enough. So, and that does, for further clarification, we do have a matrix we complete with the tech colleges every year to show which of the high school programs articulate into their more advanced programs, which programs are replicated at the high schools, like for example, certified nursing assistant. You can become a certified nursing assistant through some of our high school programs. It's the same program you can get at the tech colleges, but due to such a critical need in our community, we brought it to the high schools to help Lee Health fill those positions. Some of the programs, you do them in our high schools and then you move into a more advanced program or you can go entry level into the workforce. And then some of our programs, they do not have at the tech colleges and vice versa.
Bridging opportunities, so it's really great.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was going to add one thing, Ms. Davis. If we can perhaps add some of that information into the board weekly update so that the board is aware of what programs are and how they matriculate into the tech colleges, it sounds like that might be beneficial.
Yeah, so that the community understands what great work that they're all doing. No, thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, it's part of telling our story, you know what I'm saying? And so, thank you.
You both, our next question relates to item H6, approval of amendment one for Oasis Charter Middle School Makerspace Initiative. The question is, has this change already been approved by the Department of Education or is this the documentation to send to DOE for approval? Question will be responded to by Terry Kennedy, our Director of Grants and Program Development.
Good afternoon. And the answer is yes to both. It was submitted and it was approved. They essentially approved verbally, but we have to follow up with the amendment paperwork.
Okay. Ms. Gettens, any other questions regarding that?
Uh, no, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kennedy, we're going to have you stay right here because our next question pertains to H10, good cause, approval of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief or ESER funds under the American Rescue Plan Act grant. The question is, would you please explain how this affects or not the distribution of ESER funds? Are these additional positions and where will they be assigned?
So as far as the question about positions, the positions that are in there are positions that were created in ESER one and two. There's only three new positions and those were for the principal coach positions. As far as how does this affect, I'm not sure the question, the, we have not received the funds yet, we submitted the application when it was due in December and we are still waiting for approval.
Okay.
Ms. Gettens?
And the thing, the reason I bring it up to, I myself and people get very confused with ESER. And whenever they hear that you're doling out in ESER dollars somewhere, everybody's ears perk up and say, well, is that coming out of the pot that goes over here? That's why I bring it up. So to say it's a different pot, we are not taking this from teachers or, you know, staff or whatever, this is something that's a separate thing and that's why I wanted the clarification.
Correct, and we should be covering a little bit of that this afternoon in the strategic plan.
Awesome, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That advanced preview, that's terrific. So now we're going to move to item I3, approval of the budget amendment dated January 31, 2022 to amend the 2122 annual school budget. And we're looking at item I4, approval of the monthly budget report for the period ending January 31, 2022. So we have two questions under this item. The first question is, there are significant changes, reallocations, although I think we already answered that one.
You did this one.
So let's jump to.
You did this.
Did I do this already? Okay, thank you. And we were able to grab, thank you very much.
So we're on page, the next page.
So let's keep going, thank you for keeping me on track.
L4.
All right, L4, thank you. Approval to renew ITN number N187334LN, indoor air quality, environmental consulting, asbestos, lead abatement, microbial remediation, remodeling and painting. The question is, why are we allowing a contract to renew that is under investigation? And there are a series of questions underneath, so we're going to turn it over to Frederick Ross to answer these questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Frederick Ross, good afternoon, board. Attorney, Deprey Bruno, Dr. Carlin. So one vendor is under review, not the entire contract, one vendor is under review and we need to continue these services. These are much needed indoor air quality services that are performed on a daily basis. So we are in need to have this contract approved even while this, our current vendor is under review and maintenance staff understands the instructions on not utilizing this vendor until the review is complete.
Ms. Javonelli?
I have a lot of questions, but I'm a little concerned over the word review versus investigation. I think we're not being transparent in really what's happening here. So is it, who's reviewing then?
That is being reviewed by the legal department.
Okay, so not, it's not investigation, it's a review?
So we were notified that there was a investigation or an inquiry by the department. I don't want to go into all of it because I don't have all of the information, I just know that we were notified that an outside agency was reviewing this.
Okay, so, I mean, I have a long list of stuff regarding, I know under this contract there's a coil cleaning and coil cleaning, from all the information that I've done some research on, coil cleaning falls under HVAC. Is that correct?
No, it's not correct. It can fall under multiple areas. It is, coil is part of the HVAC system, but cleaning it is part of the indoor, could be, is a prevention for indoor air quality. And I have Barbara Sedino, she can go into a little more information, but I will say again, this contract is not just for coil cleaning, there's many other services on there. Historically, this, this department has grouped the indoor air quality, the coil clean with the indoor air quality and the HVAC contract has been more specifically for the repair of the unit. We hear you, it is something that we would like to look at in the future, but unfortunately we, it is.
You can't separate things in a contract.
You can't separate, right. Now, it would take looking at multiple contracts and our internal operations to do so.
Right.
But, but we, we hear you loud and clear and it is some, an area I would like to look at.
Yeah, because also I know other districts separate the mold testing versus mold remediation. The same vendor cannot do both.
Now, that is correct.
That's why they have it, in several districts that I, I had spoken to in the past, they, they separate those contracts out. So, I mean, this contract is kind of, is very questionable and so I can understand why it's being, why it's being investigated.
So if I can respond to that, on this contract, it is separated within the contract. So we have a category A and a category B, two totally separate set of qualifications. And if a vendor, a vendor that performs services on category A can't perform category B on that same project, that is how we separate those services.
Right. But I know mold remediation can be very, very costly. And when you clean, when you're cleaning something after, you've got, something that has mold, you know, a room or whatever, there's, you've got to clean the air conditioning, but you don't just clean the coils to prevent mold. I mean, so, you understand what I'm saying? So just mold, coil cleaning is not going to prevent mold. It doesn't, it doesn't work like that.
I'll let Barbara Sedino speak a little more detail about that.
Especially once you have mold. Mold is every, you know, it grows everywhere.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Sedino from Maintenance Services. So we have, the HVAC system has two different types of coils. We have coils at the chiller, which is the outside units, and we also have coils within the air handler unit. An air handler unit has, it's responsible for a combination of things, removing the heat from the air that's collected from a given space. And once it goes through that system, it goes through the coils in order to cool down that air. As it's passing through these coils, what happens is there's like water that kind of like, you know, because of the heat, coldness, there's that condensation that builds up on these coils. So what happens is, if you don't clean up, clean these coils, contaminants and microbial growth can occur within these coils. In order to prevent that from being picked up by air that's flowing through these coils, um, we clean the coils, uh, twice a year to prevent that from happening. When the air flows through the system and, and, and it's a cool, cool unit, then you don't have the contaminants reaching the space within, within the classroom, which, if it does, because it's not being properly cleaned, it impacts the air quality when, because of these allergens, contaminants, it triggers allergies, it can mess up the asthma for particular students. Therefore, it's important that as these units are cleaned, you know, that we have that, the clean units, so the air, as it's flowing through, can actually, you know, go through a, a clean system. Does that make sense?
Yes, but remediation contract is for doing remedial work. Maintenance, HVAC maintenance should fall under an HVAC contract, and that would be the normal maintenance of cleaning the coils or cleaning, and also the system. 'Cause you, not only would you, at that point in time, would you clean coils, but you're gonna clean the air ducts that generate out as well, you're gonna, that would be what you would need to clean as well, because just 'cause you're cleaning the coil doesn't stop it from being in the air, in the, in the vents, so you would have to continue that as well.
It's a, it's a level of prevention that you have at, at the air handler unit, so as, as, as the air is passing through, because you're disinfecting, because you're sanitizing those units, it's, it's killing whatever bacteria or growth that you have in those systems. So it is one level of defense, um, that we have within those units, it's not the only one.
Right, but my point is, when you have an indoor air quality contract, that's for mold remediation, that's what your job, that's the scope of the, the work, is, is to mold remediate, and that, that's what that remediator is to do. They're not a, a maintenance contract. A maintenance contract should fall under HVAC and a maintenance contract. I mean, that, because you're gonna do that continuously, you don't know what's gonna be mold, it's gonna have mold, that's, what's gonna Florida, that could be tomorrow at any place, um, or not, so it's just, I don't, there's just, this contract is, like I said, has, um, it's not even, they're not even HVAC contractors that's doing that, so like, that's what, doesn't make sense to me, why wouldn't you use an HVAC contractor to do the coil cleaning?
So that's part of, one of the requirements under that Part B, is, is to have those, those licenses to be able to do this type of work.
Sure, for remediation, not for HVAC. I mean, technically, for remediation, part of the process, I think.
If I, if I may, I, in reading this too, it says that, am I, my, I have family members who do this for a living, they, they don't do it for the district, they do it outside, not even here, but that is part of their cleaning too, and I was looking at, and that's part of the first thing, is the coil cleaning is the first step to eliminating the mold. So, that, that is all part of the, of the process that you go through in tearing walls down.
In remediation, absolutely, that's, that's my point, and, and, my point is, but it's not a maintenance. The, this contract is, is, they're doing maintenance, it's, they're doing this twice a year, and it's this contractor. Why wouldn't the AC contractor be doing the maintenance? That is my, that is exactly my point, thank you, Ms. Jordan.
So again, the same answer, it has historically been done where the HVAC repair contract has been for the repairs of the units, and in the indoor air quality, has included all the remediation for indoor air quality, including coil cleaning. So that, that is why this has been, since, since this contract has been established, has been like that.
So, that's my question to you, Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Do you, what is your recommendation with this contract? You mentioned it earlier, can you just reiterate that, please?
Yes, so my recommendation is to continue, to allow us to continue to provide these services, um, while this one vendor is under review, allow us to look at both indoor air quality and our HVAC contracts, also look at internally, under our new director, look at our HVAC operations internally, and, and the staffing, and see what the right mix is, both staffing and, and outside sourcing, and what the right combination of scope of work for the individual contracts are. We can definitely utilize, you know, some of the other districts and see how they have, how they've split the scope and how their contracts are set up, but it will take some time for this new administration to, to take a look at these, these items.
And this is the last year, this is the last renewal year of this contract, am I correct? I'm looking at...
I'm looking at Susan Millay, one more, one-year renewal, so there is one, one-year renewal left, we would like to look at that prior to that renewal.
Okay, thank you.
Point 23.
And that just leads me to one question to the board attorney, so, um, we're renewing this contract, but one vendor that's under review will, will not, but what does that...
One vendor will not receive any projects until the review is completed, 'cause until such time, we don't know what the outcome of that review will be. So in the interim, that vendor will not receive any projects, and then from there, we will see where we go once that review is completed.
So what does that, and I apologize, and I'll be done, what does that, how does that lead the district then, without a vendor that, 'cause I know there's only like three vendors on...
That's correct, there are three vendors on that Part B category, so if we're not able to utilize that particular vendor, we still have the other two as a backup for the services that we may need for, for the district.
And, and as I stated in my, in my statement, I just wanna make sure that we're treating all vendors equal, and, and that's my concern as well, 'cause we've never done this before like this, so I'm really kinda concerned over that as well. Thank you.
Ms. DePree Bruno, do you have...
Have done this before, when there was an issue with another vendor that was also being reviewed, there was an insurance issue, the board actually directed staff to not provide that particular vendor with projects until there was a resolution, so this is not the first time that we've done that.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and I wanted to comment on what Ms. Giavennelli said, and if it's okay, lead into my, um, my question. Um, I remember, because it was early in my term as a board member, I believe it was around January or February 2019, this contract, um, this contract has a history of being controversial, and I remember specifically asking a lot of questions at that time, and again, I was new on, on the board, about, um, maintenance and the number of people in maintenance that were certified to do HVAC and certified for some, and I don't know that we ever really got deep into, um, the question of in-house versus contracted people. That said, my question was on this, on Fresh Air Solutions, under review, which is a nice way of saying the legal department is keeping an eye on them because they are under investigation, and we're not talking under investigation by a private eye, we're talking big time under investigation. I want to know, is there a formal signed statement indicating that this company will not be assigned projects pending the review, in other words, pending the outcome of the, um, investigation of this very large government agency?
No, ma'am, there's no, no former agreement in place, um, maintenance staff has...
Are they informed of this, Fresh Air Solutions? Had they been informed, and what was their response?
I, I, I can probably answer, I did receive a phone call from their attorney, and I discussed this issue with them, and they were going to reach out to certain other, um, agencies to get more information as well, so that's where we...
So, does that mean that they are contemplating bringing suit against us for a breach of contract?
No, no.
Okay.
I, I have no indication of that at this time, what I have is that they were also wanting to know what this other agency was doing, so they can see if there's anything in their power that they can do to wrap whatever their, their investigation is. So that's, that's where we left with the conversation, but they do understand that they are, what our agenda item is, that they are, at this time, not receiving any projects pending the review because of the fact that there is certain things that are happening.
Okay, and what I want to say is, because this company has slipped through several times, um, and I don't mind saying that out loud, I'm not comfortable with them even being a part of this without a signed, formal statement that indicates it, that they will not be getting assigned projects. And then I would like to see, I think as board members, we're entitled to see before we release them, um, from this signed formal, that we see the positive or negative results of the investigation, that we're informed by legal. I will not be supporting this unless there is some kind of documentation, not just a statement that we get tomorrow, or for tomorrow's, um, recommendation. So I will not be supporting it unless I have something definitive that tells me, um, the situation.
So I, I guess my question, Mr. DePree Bruno, is there a way, because I know there's other vendors out there that we're not using at this particular time because of investigation reviews, or whatever that looks like, and they're still sitting out there waiting to see if we are using them ever again or not, um, so is there a way of doing this without their name in here?
I will have to talk with staff, and we'll, we'll review that with the rest of legal as well, we'll have to review that, Ms. Jordan.
Because then that would eliminate worrying about somebody slipping through, or anything like that, 'cause I know we need the other people that are on this list, they need them to do the work, so how do we make that happen, so they're not, we're not hurting the district by not having the work completed? Ms. Giavennelli?
So, that leads me to another question, um, also in my, out of my concerns, 'cause this particular vendor has come to board meetings and harassed, um, the public in the hallway, made threats against board members and the public, and followed through with some of them, and the, the district did nothing about it, complaints were made, um, and I'm finding out that it's actually against board policy to even do that, uh, when there's a, a contract being renewed, and, uh, so, my concern is, nothing happened to this vendor, but now we have other vendors that have been criticized for coming, coming forward, because it was against board policy, so that, there's where I'm talking about, things aren't equitable, and treated, and everybody's not treated the same, so it's really important that, or, uh, I just wanna make sure that that is the case in this situation, and it continues, you know, we continue to do what we're supposed to be doing, and following our policies with each vendor, um, you know, equally.
So in, in hearing what everybody has mentioned, and I do see that it's, what, Feb., it's already late in signing this, 'cause it's February?
Yeah.
February 26th, so today, we're in March. How quickly can that be turned around so that they have what they need to get this renewed and move forward without all the other, by pulling out that one particular vendor?
So we need time, staff and I and the legal team need time to be able to digest that information and see if there's any other alternatives. We did discuss this, and this appeared to be the best way to move forward, given what we know, 'cause we don't know a lot about what is going on, um, but given what we know, this seemed to be the best course of action. I will add to, and agree 100% with Ms. Giavennelli, that we need to make sure that we treat all vendors the same. This particular contract predates me, we are where we are at this point, and we will handle it accordingly.
So where does that put Mr. Ross and the rest? If we're, yeah, where does that put us, if you don't have this right now, because they are working for us right now, Bart?
Right, we, we would not be able to contract those services without this approval, and I, I'll just add that, again, we will instruct staff not to utilize this vendor, and that has not been the issue in the past, once we've given that instruction.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, and you brought this up, Ms. Jordan, it's also, we're about a week past the beginning, because it says, um, February 26th. What are we doing now in this, in this window?
We're waiting for this to get approved, so...
What are we doing now if we, in the time?
Those ser, those services are waiting for us to approve, so those services are waiting to be done by those contractors once this gets approved.
Okay.
This, this agenda was previously brought forward and pulled, um, and, you know, this is us bringing it back again, trying to get this approved, so we can, so start those services back again.
And as, as I said, this contract has a history of being, of having controversial and questioned elements, the kinds of things that Mrs. Giavennelli elaborated on, and if I'm remembering correctly, I believe in an audit, there were some, um, some things that were brought up that weren't accepted when, when we had, um, an audit, two years ago, I think.
2019, and that's what, that's actually what started the whole...
Yeah, so, yeah, and that, and that's behind all this, but I'm gonna say it again, that I will not accept this, and, um, you know, with all due respect, I'm gonna tell staff not to use them, I wanna see it in writing, um, because...
And that was the...
There's, there's a history with this, with Fresh Air Solutions, and, um, I wanna see it in writing, and I'd like to see what their response is, if they do have a response. Um, and that's my position on this.
Okay, so, so, Mr. DePree Bruno, what I mean, as far as like a recommendation, I, we need to, I don't want them just leaving and it's just sitting here, we have, obviously we have questions and concerns about this particular, um, item, and it's tomorrow, that we'll be voting on it, so...
The only thing I can advise the board that we, staff and legal team needs to meet and discuss it again, we did meet, this appeared to be the best course of action, given what we know at this time. The only representation that I can make is that I have had communications with their counsel, and I know that their counsel is having communications with the outside agency, and I know that the outside agency is still looking at this. So until such time, as we know what the results are, this is where we are. So I, I will get together with staff to see if there's any other alternatives that we can do to bring before the board tomorrow.
Ms. Fisher?
So, in reading the recommended action in the contract, it does say in writing, "Fresh Air Solutions will not be provided any projects pending the completion of a review." Is that adequate, Attorney DePree Bruno, is that adequate documentation?
We felt that in our review of the statute and all of the, in our discussions with staff, we felt that that was adequate, to be able to ensure that the vendor is aware, staff is given instruction, because obviously this is something that's gonna come before the board for approval. We, again, used something very similar in the past, and that particular vendor did not do any work, so we think that it is adequate.
Okay, so in what you just mentioned, so, this is not a contract, but, I mean, it's...
It's the agenda item that the board will be approving.
Right, so, I just wanted to make sure that, that was not a contract that we're looking at, and then, um...
Ms. Millay is here as well.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I just had a thought while I was listening to the conversation. The first item is that in order for staff to proceed with a letter of stopping work, we require board approval. So in our conversation with the attorney, this was the recommended action, so that we could document that we wanna go forward with a letter to the vendor, but we can't just do that without having the support from the board, so that's why the agenda was as written. This same language was presented in one or two, um, board agendas previously for different vendors, and that was the recommendation of the board in the past. So this agenda was written based on the history of what the board recommended previously, so that staff could proceed with not awarding, um, any work to this vendor. In addition, there's another thing that we can do to prevent work from going through, we can make the vendor inactive for ordering in the system, which would prevent... We can make the vendor inactive for ordering in the system, which would prevent any orders, any purchases, from going forward to the vendor. So those two things might be helpful in the discussion.
Okay. And then also, in what you just mentioned, so if they were to, and I guess we could also add to that, if, when this, the time were to come, that the investigate, the review was over, then before they would do any work, that they would bring it back before us?
Correct. And that's what we have done in other situations where we've had some questions about engaging with a vendor, is once additional information comes forward, staff meets with legal, legal presents to the board the recommendation, the board recommends, and then staff takes direction from the board's recommendation.
Thank you for that. Ms. Vaughn, are you?
Well, then, I would like to see a formal letter because Mrs. DePree Bruno said you've been in contact with their attorney and that they know about this. But I won't support this until I see a signed letter to them indicating the situation. And so that there's something, that there's something in writing. Because to me, just saying it in a recommendation doesn't put any teeth in it. And this vendor has a lot of, let's say, connections. And I don't trust it. I don't trust just this. I would like to see something signed and sent so that I know that they have been formally informed about this. And also, hopefully, that would prevent any backlash from that particular company.
Through the chair, Ms. Vaughn, I can share an email that was sent to the attorney that specifically says, here's the information that I have thus far for your review. And I also know that the attorney has already been in contact with this outside agency. We, as Ms. Malley indicated, what we have done in the past is bring it to the board for the board to be able to say yes or no. And then once the board gives us direction from that point, then we can formally notify the vendor of our position. So that's what we have done in the past. That was the anticipation of what we were going to do today. It just so happened that I spoke to the attorney, you know, as the attorney was asking some questions, it just so happens that I had an opportunity to speak to him. But normally, that's how we would handle that.
Okay, well, I'll have it in writing, but I'm pulling this.
Okay. So one possible solution would also be if we were to have our legal department draft a letter that would go out to the vendor, that would reference the vote taken by the board. And so perhaps if we had that draft letter saying what action we would be taking, and then if the board chooses to vote on the language that is presented, then we could have that letter ready to go the following day, on Wednesday, that would say, based on board action taken on this date, this is, you know, we are not proceeding with awarding projects to this firm.
Well, and it may pass the way it is, so.
Well, either case, we would notify formally after the vote is passed or not, you know, we would notify the vendor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any other question? Any other comments? No? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malley, for coming up as well. Thank you all. Hi, Dr. Savage.
Here, Adam, here.
Dr. Savage?
On to item L7, I believe is where he left off. Approval for Amendment 1 and cost increase to Phase 2A, pre-construction budget estimate for the Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, a VPA renovation project. The question was, why in the contract agreement is Section 5.8 referred to but not in the contract? The East Zone, specifically District 5, has lost a school in this process. The use of the previous old Lambs building was not handled through board policy. There were discussions regarding VPAA but not the actual use in the name of the Lambs Building. We have been told it is not yet decided, and the community will be able to participate, for example, in Policy 9.10. Why are decisions not following policy, procedure, and protocols? The contract is referred to as a VPA campus master plan design. Nowhere does it mention the possibility of two separate schools or any other options that were discussed in the past. Staff and the superintendent have said nothing that has been confirmed yet, as we are scheduled to open the, quote, "old Lambs Building" for students in five months. Please explain when and how the community and the elected representative for District 5 will be involved and informed. What portion and stage of preparation of this contract is for the Performing Arts Center? When will the community and the elected board member that represents that area be involved in planning, like other board members, integral involvement in projects in their area? And for this, we have Mr. Ross and Ms. Eba. Ms. Eba?
So there's multiple questions in this. I'm going to preface it all by saying that at tomorrow's board briefing, there is a lengthy discussion about this project that will include team members from across the school district and Principal Carter. So some of these answers are probably going to be more addressed in detail tomorrow, but I will give some summary answers this afternoon. So in question 1, why is the contract amendment in Section 5A referred to but not in the contract? The table reference should be to paragraph 5.7, not 5.8. In response to question 1, the one, the question in 1 and A regarding the direction, at the April 13, 2021 board briefing, staff from that same group that will be presenting tomorrow across departments, including academic services, planning, the principal, and others, we felt we received direction to pursue the development of a single campus with three academies, a primary K-2, an intermediate 3.5, and a middle school 6.8 with the ESE pre-K program. That is the direction that staff is continuing to pursue per the direction of the district. As we are following this direction to pursue a single unified campus, staff does not believe that there is a need to go through the renaming process and that we will go through the four phases of the project, from the visioning through the master planning of the original Lambs Campus, the master planning for the performing arts campus, and the visioning and master planning for the primary and intermediate school tomorrow. The second question about the Performing Arts Center. The Performing Arts Center is currently in Phase 1 design. The cost of the construction is not budgeted at this time. The cost for the Performing Arts Center will be determined at the completion of Phase 1 design, which happens later this year. Staff will review the budget as it relates to the multiple phases of the project at tomorrow's briefing. And the final one regarding when will community involvement and board involvement happening, we have identified in the master planning process a number of opportunities for community and for board involvement in the master planning effort for, as we move forward, and that we expect that this master planning effort will tie together not only the elementary school components, which is the primary and intermediate schools, but also look to unify the campus and provide a single character, as was discussed and established back at the April 13, 2021 board briefing.
Ms. Patrica?
So Ms. Eba, thank you for that explanation. When you say that you felt that you received consensus, does that mean we ran around the table and did this?
We had a 6 to 1, 6 positive and 1 sideways.
That's, that was my recollection, but I don't remember when we started to do that, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we did, we did the 6.
You did actually get direction from the board, and you have been pursuing and acting based on that consensus or that direction since that time?
That is what, that is what we have been acting on.
Thank you.
You good? Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I'm sorry, we have a family issue I had to deal with. Okay. The one statement about the 5.8, if you look in the documentation that we were given the contract agreement under L7, where it says administrative content, contract agreement, when you click on that and you go down to 5 point, it's page 11, and it goes from 5.6 to 5.7 and to 6.1. There is no 5.8.
Right. And the, the reference is wrong. The reference shouldn't reference 5.8, it should reference 5.7.
Yeah, that's what she said. Well, that's what I was trying to understand.
You got 5.8 on there.
No, but that's what they had. Their reference said 5.8. I was copying what they said.
So in the document, there's a table, and inside of the table, there is a reference to, it says C5.8, and it should simply say C5.7. So there was a typo.
I don't know, folks. I feel like I'm being basically railroaded with this, and I have no recourse. And I've said several times before that it was not handled correctly from the very beginning. And I have been told by two superintendents that, well, it's not done. It's, it's still, there's all kinds of possibilities, and nothing has been decided. But when I read through this, and it's called the VPAA, you know, project, it's, it's a done deal. And it was a done deal to do, and I'm not attacking staff, please do not say that. I am attacking the fact that this process was not done in a manner that I feel was equitable to everyone and all stakeholders. And I've said it before, and I will continue to say it again. We, I live 10 minutes from this, and as a taxpayer and a community member, had no input really in this decision. It was done. And so many times I have said, we as a district make decisions, and then we ask questions afterwards, and then we say, this is what we're going to do. And the community is aware, the community talks about it, and some communities are more involved than other communities, and I just, I just don't understand that. It's basically that you're going to do what you're going to do. And so the community input after the fact, what's the point? The district has decided they're going to do this. I spoke with someone at an event on Friday evening that has, in the community, that has had a part to do with this, and I'm not going to mention names, but they were talking about how the, you know, looking forward, they're going to be doing this and this with the Performing Arts Center. And we had a lengthy discussion, and they said to me, what is it that you want? I said, it's not what I want, it's the need that is not being met. I said, you can have Carnegie Hall in the middle of Homestead and Lee Boulevard if you want to, but not before students and their academic needs have been taken care of. And I just, I just feel, and other people do as well, that, you know, it was fixing up the school and the campus and the, and performing arts. Performing arts is up here, and academics in the school is at a lower level. I can't fight the system. I can only say what, and represent the community and the things that they are saying. And I am not attacking you, I am not attacking anyone else in the room. I am talking about the process. It was not done equitably. And it all began with moving students from one school into the brand-new school that would have given us 1,450 additional student stations. And now that is not happening. I have heard through various sources as well that this whole process, we're losing seats. And I know you're going to come up with it tomorrow and talk about it then, so I will hold off on some of my comments, but I, I just, it is not right. It is not right the way it was done. And people in my community feel less than. I'll just say that. But thank you, and I will hold off and wait until tomorrow.
Thank you. We look forward to the discussion tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Savage?
Last agenda question, at the end of the L section. Questions that were skipped over.
I believe that was, unless, was there any other questions that we did not ask or get on here?
No.
No? If we can take a, I know we have another meeting.
I just have to step, I have to step out, but you don't have to stop.
But before we go in, because we have 120 minutes going forward, so can we just take a five-minute break? So that way, when everybody gets back, they're prepared. And I apologize to you all who have been sitting out there for a minute, but if we can, that way we have everybody's full concentration.
To be sustainable, then we need to make sure that we are improving every day. Our overall strategic objective is to meet the academic and social emotional needs of each student. In order to do that, our students need to be able to master core subject areas such as English, Language Arts, reading, math, social studies, science. And then we need to help them develop those foundational skills and those social emotional skills to be successful. And our district needs to be sustainable in order for those things to happen. The pandemic has had a huge impact on all of those areas. When we look at absenteeism for students and for our teachers, when we look at the changing types of instruction that we've had over the past two years, that has resulted in learning loss, and we know that. So that's impacting mastery of core subjects. When we look at social distancing, the amount of online learning that has taken place, and just changes in the way we do business, we know that that has had a huge social emotional impact on all of our community. And sometimes we don't see what that impact is on our students. So it's really hampered the building of relationships in some cases, and the ability to really develop those social emotional skills that are necessary for success. And then when we look at district sustainability, we've had, again, vacancies. We've had supply chain issues, and those things have impacted our ability to move forward with some of our projects. So today you're going to hear about some of those challenges, but you're also going to hear about how we are addressing those barriers in order to be successful. We have five long-term objectives in our strategic plan. And throughout the year, you hear updates on pieces of that plan every time you have a briefing, every time you have a workshop. But today, we're going to focus on the three main academic areas, and you're going to hear a lot about those three areas, two hours worth. So we are really excited to present it to you. We're looking forward to hearing your questions and comments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Spiro to talk a little bit about the contextualization of the past academic year.
Thank you very much, Ms. McClung. Thank you very much. So I want to take you back a little bit of last year. I know it seems like it was forever ago last year. Remember last year, Lee Home Connect? We gave our families flexibility to much the chagrin of many, of allowing the flexibility to go back and forth between Lee Virtual School and face-to-face and Lee Home Connect. And we really heard our community last year and said flexibility for you deciding what was important for your own children was key. So that was last year. And then last summer, our team was recharged. It was all about restarting the academic engine. And we had a theme with all of our district leadership around the amazing race. And we were all set to go. We had our interventions. We had looked at our data. And then bam, COVID hit for us harder this year than it did last year. The year that we are having this year was the year we thought we were going to have last year. But the world changed as well, and things were different this time. Our parents were a lot more vocal. Our teachers and our principals experienced that in the schoolhouse. The changes to the landscape of public education. There's an eye, very much an eye on public education that's happening across this country. That has impacted our schoolhouse. And our principals and our teachers feel that. So this time, it's different. It wasn't as if we were the heroes of the community along with our healthcare professionals. There was a little bit of an attack on public education. And so I want to give you a little bit of that because that's a piece of what our principals and teachers experienced. We also had students coming back who had not been in school for two years, some of them, two years. Meaning they didn't know, they didn't have those procedures in place on how to socialize some of those social norms for some of our students. And they certainly were academically behind. And so the challenge was, and has been for us, is how did we reduce that? How do we reduce that academic achievement gap for students as they're returning back to school while maintaining the academic excellence of trying to move those students forward? So halfway through the year, the executive directors and myself and the curriculum team, as well as our student services team, we had a mid-year data chat with our principals. And the question that I kept asking them, I was listening for what were some of the barriers that they were experiencing in the schoolhouse? And what you see up on the screen are the barriers. They were themes from our principals that I personally heard when we were having the data chats with them. One of them certainly, and it's not a surprise to anybody, one of them was absenteeism. We're talking staff absenteeism as well as student absenteeism. And so when staff is absent, and this is one thing we hear from you all the time as well. You know, our staff are covering classes. They're handling a lot of different tasks at one time, as well as handling their own students. And so what's the impact on that? The impact of that is the decline usage of professional learning communities, the lack of consistency for teachers to get together and work through the four questions that we use around planning in professional learning communities. That also reduced the lack of district support that would come into the schools because district staff were also helping to cover classrooms as well where that coverage was needed. And the one piece for me that's been staggering personally has been our student attendance. And since winter break, the best day we had was February 16th. And I wrote it down, February 16th was the best day we've had for student attendance since winter break. And there were 9,194 children absent that day. And that was the best day we had. And so that absenteeism certainly impacts for those of us who were teachers before, those of us that have been in the schoolhouses. If the kids aren't there, it's hard for them to learn the content. And yes, we have Google Classroom. Google Classroom allows them to have access to content. But it's not the pedagogy of the teachers that are implementing that in front of them. So that was a barrier that came loud from all of our principals was absenteeism. The other piece certainly was the vacancies. And we talk a lot about our vacancies for those unfilled positions. We've talked here at this table about the workforce shortage that's happening across this country. And so that impacted us as well with having vacant classrooms on top of teachers who are absent as well. And therefore, what do you have? What does that mean then? It means that the interventions that we had in place to try to address some of the learning loss, some of those interventions are unable to be completely implemented with fidelity because maybe those teachers that were supposed to be doing those interventions are covering the classes where the vacancies and absences are occurring. And then transportation became a common theme with our principal as well. Because of the work issues with transportation, what the unintended consequence of that we heard from our principals were the impact of tutoring. In the morning, the inability of the kids to stay after school, that we've had routes cut short. And so that means some kids aren't coming to school. And those of us that know that when it's a challenge to get kids to school, trying to get kids to school, and to convince them to come to school, and then let's say the bus doesn't come, then they use that also, I'm going to go home, and I'll just stay at home at this time. So those were pieces of it. The other part was, we found out, and we didn't realize this, a key learning we found out during our progress monitoring week, when buses were not running routes, those kids were not being picked up, obviously, and that was having impact to our progress monitoring. So for example, one high school shared with us their data on one week of progress monitoring where 10 buses didn't come one day, five buses didn't come the next day, five buses didn't come the next day, five buses didn't come the next day. Those were all students who missed the progress monitoring window. But then also what I heard from DAC, from our parents, were that it was adversely impacting their own student grades as well. So all of this is intertwined, all of this together. And we wanted to make sure that we repaint this picture for you to understand the reality. And we know you know the reality. But we want to make sure that it's also impacting our world. And of course, the mental health component. I truly, truly believe with all of my heart that our professionals have gone through some form of trauma, some form of depression. I've seen it in the faces and the voices of our principals. I've seen us at this table here trying to reignite passion in individuals because that's a piece of trauma, that's a piece of depression as well. And so we know that our teachers are exhausted, our principals are exhausted, yet they've all stood where they needed to be. And that's for children during this very, very difficult year. So I wanted to share those barriers because what we're going to talk to you about today are action steps and action plans that we've had in place. And we are learners. So we are continuous improvement learners. That means as we're looking at the data on a regular basis and we're talking to professionals in the field on a regular basis, we make adjustments as needed to try to meet the individual needs of our schools. And you're going to hear that today from our team as well. And then a piece up here, we also put an icon for you. So throughout this presentation, if you see a little money bag with a little dollar sign in it, that says it's been funded through ESER. And I agree with what one of you board members said. One of the board members said today, is oftentimes we confuse ESER 1, 2, and 3, and what are we spending it on? And we recognize that too. So we made sure through this presentation, when you see a little icon with a money bag, that's ESER-funded. And we'll make sure we try to point that out the first time we saw this. Because like you, we want to keep this simple and real so that you understand where we are as of today. And so we're going to begin now where it all starts, and that's in early childhood, in early learning. And so we want Mary Grace Romo is going to talk to us a little bit about the work that she's doing in early learning, and then she'll pass it off to Dr. K. Mary Grace?
Thank you, Dr. Spiro. Good afternoon, board members. It's a pleasure to be here with you and talk about early learning. So we're going to begin with acknowledging that statewide school readiness is a barrier. When we look at our state data, you have here before you the Big Ten districts. You can see that Lee County is holding steady and is comparable with the other districts at 46%. If you look back, we've gained five percentage points since 2019, 2020. We're not using school year 2020, 2021 data as part of our analysis because as you can see across the districts, the number of children tested fell significantly due to the pandemic. On the next slide, you have a visual looking at the data in a bar graph. School year 1920 is in blue, and 2122 is in orange. And so it just gives you a different way to look at how we are holding steady compared to many of the districts. And we've made gains in spite of all of the crisis, the barriers, the trauma, the, you know, children learning in masks is a whole new concept in early learning. But we are moving forward. And in April, I will be presenting more in-depth information to you about the state of pre-K and where we're heading. And I look forward to that. Next, we're looking at our KPIs. And the first one I'm going to talk to you about is Teaching Strategies Gold. Now, Teaching Strategies Gold is a formative assessment. It's research-based. It's developmentally appropriate as an assessment. And it is our key indicator for school readiness and our children progressing and learning and entering kindergarten. As you can see, we're on track. If you look at the quarter-two data, that's where we would expect many of our children to be. The one that does stand out to me, and I'm sure you as well, is the mathematics area. And so I look forward in April, talking to you more about how we're going to be addressing that area. The next objective is focused on our VPK assessment. And you can see in AP2, we test our children three times a year. So it starts at the beginning of the year. We do a mid-year, and we do an ending assessment. This assessment is assessing where children should be at the end of pre-K. So we would expect the scores to look very much like this at the beginning of the year. But what's encouraging is the amount of progress that's been made between AP1 and AP2. I'd like to just make a comment that when you look at phonological awareness, another one that leapt out at me, I wonder how much growth in phonological awareness has been impacted by teachers in masks, children in masks? Because part of phonological awareness is seeing how language is made. And you can tell I get very excited about language, just like Dr. Savage. But we'll be talking more about that in April. So I'm going to hold that for you till April. And we will move on to the next slide. Now, the next slide is our articulation process between community providers and the school district of Lee County. This is an initiative that did some amazing things before I joined the team and has recently been reinvigorated in January. So we are picking up the work, we're recommencing the work where it was left off during the transition. And we are very excited about hosting this year's superintendent's Pre-K to 3 Forum on April 19th. You'll be getting more information about that. And also reinvigorating that articulation process between elementary schools and the providers in their local area. We have much work to do in this area. And lastly, attendance. And Dr. Spiro mentioned the absenteeism rate. We are feeling it in pre-K tremendously. You can see January was particularly rough. And what I will share with you in April is some of the strategic interventions and measures that we are putting in place. Even as I speak, things are happening behind the scenes because obviously, children can't get ready for kindergarten if they're not in school. And now, Dr. K is going to speak to you about progress monitoring data.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that coming through there? Okay, thank you. So when we're looking at progress monitoring data for this school year, Dr. Spiro kind of laid out a very broad context of the environment in which our academic performance is trending. And so there's a few key points we want to make in the beginning of this to establish where this type of analysis might be going. So the first one is similar throughout the state or consistent throughout the state. Lee County this year is bringing in, or what we call onboarding, a more academically vulnerable group than in recent memory. And we'll define what we mean by that. But academically vulnerable can be characterized by students who are below or substantially below proficient in statewide assessments, right? Bless you. And that is a statewide phenomenon, and we'll kind of talk about that in a second. And the next key point is that we are in Lee County also at an intersection of not only statewide phenomena that we'll talk about, but also local context as well. So there's things that are going on at the statewide level that we're experiencing. But then there's unique aspects to what's happening in Lee County, and different trends and different types of statistical behaviors that we can look at and explore more there as well. So we look at the statewide context and the local context. And so one of the things that we're going to talk about when we get to our progress monitoring data is that our proficiency is trending lower than it was at this point last year. And we'll talk about why in a little bit. And another aspect of this is that when broken down by student strata, we see in many areas, students are performing better than they were at this time last year, but the overall proficiency is lower. And we'll talk about why as we get through those slides. So the first aspect we're going to look at, and I'm going to be joined here by Ms. Davis as well, is we're going to look at some broad trends over the last couple of years that are related to our strategic plan. And then we'll look after that at the current data, what's going on right now. So this first slide is meant to give you a visual of what's happening at the statewide context and how that relates to also what's happening here in Lee County. And so these two graphs here represent the grade-five math FSA data for both the state and then for Lee County in 2019 and in 2021. All right, so those two are kind of next to one another to give that comparison. And what we talk about when we're saying academically vulnerable students is we're talking about students who are below proficient or substantially below proficient. In other words, Level 1 or Level 2 students on these assessments. So when we look at the composition of both the state's grade-five math cohort and then the district's grade-five math cohort, one of the first things we want to point out is the substantial increase in students who earned a Level 1 on the grade-five math FSA for both the state and for Lee County. And you can see the patterns between the state and Lee County are very similar. Not identical, you know, point here or there, but for the most part, they behave similarly in terms of how the students performed. And the differences in the 2019 and the 2021 performance. What that means is, right, those students who were grade-five students last year are now grade-six math students. And so when we talk about onboarding an academically vulnerable cohort, what we're referring to here is the composition of that group. They have greater needs academically than historically. And you can see that, how it's demonstrated there, particularly with your Level 1 students. And Level 1 students, unsurprisingly, have a lower level of proficiency than Level 3, 4, or 5. And when that composition changes, overall proficiency is often what follows. Okay, so there's a good example of the statewide context. The next slide is data taken from Florida Department of Education EdStats. And this gives just one example of the local context. This is the ELL composition of our school district, and it's the percentage increase in the percentage of students classified as ELL and comparing it to the large districts throughout the state. And what you'll see in Lee County, which is highlighted in orange there, is an outlier in its substantial increase in the percentage of students who are defined as English-language learners. And so this is, you know, not compare, but this is coupling statewide phenomenon that are spread generally consistently throughout grade levels throughout the state, and then bringing in a local context as well. And as a division, trying to learn from these data and determine how does this impact student learning? How can we better support this? And what are the lessons and what are the messages we can gain out of this? And so the entire presentation, this is kind of a context setting piece right here, saying as we look at these data, we want to be mindful of both statewide phenomena and then local unique phenomena, and how they coupled to perform a unique story for Lee County. So the first aspect we're going to look at, which is related to our strategic plan, is graduation rate. So there is a five-year trend projected for you on the board here. And Lee County is in blue, and the state of Florida is in orange. And you can see our five-year trend and see that the year-over-year, the graduation rate for Lee County declined to 85.1% from 88.5%, a 3.4% decline. It comes in as of those, the second highest of the five-year trend. But also noticing the state's trend line increased at 0.1%. So in terms of internal, Lee County, the number at 85.1% is recognized as the second highest, but also the state had a slight increase, so that gap between the state grew in those two things. So those are some data points that kind of conflict with each other, but certainly something that we're continuing to explore. The next slide here breaks it down by equity subgroups. You'll see a similar phenomenon, basically kind of keeping trend with that same thing, is that each of those three went down. Although one thing pointing out here is that the gap in those groups did kind of maintain its narrowing, if that's the proper way of saying it, it's narrowing compared to three, four, or five years ago. Doing on, same thing with ELLs and non-ELLs, another way of looking at it. Again, slight decreases from the year prior, but a more narrow gap than historically. And then finally, looking at between district traditional schools and charter schools. Again, the district schools and charter schools, each experienced a decline. The amount of decline was less substantial for the district-level schools and the charter schools. But that is something that within the trend line historically behaves similarly to the other data points that we looked at. And I'm also joined by Ms. Davis here, who is going to address college and career acceleration together with me.
Good afternoon. The first two graphs that you're looking at are related to the goal that is attached to having our students graduate from our district with at least one industry certification because we know the value of these industry certifications in the workforce and post-secondary education. We wanted to just give you a status update on how that has been impacted over the last few years. The graph on the left is about the enrollment, and that is in grades 6 through 12. And you can see our highest year was 2019-20. We had 37,656 CTE course enrollments in grades 6 through 12. The next year is when we took our biggest hit, and that dropped to 32,240. As of January 31st this year, so we're on that fourth orange bar, I'm delighted to share that we have 35,914 CTE course enrollments. So we are doing much better. We've already exceeded last year's enrollment. And remember, that was such a great year for enrollment in 2019-20, but we are trending back upwards, and we're very excited about that. The graph on the right actually looks at how many industry certifications and digital tool certificates our students in grades 6 through 12 have earned over the last few years. You'll see in school year, the first blue bar, 2018-19, that was just a wonderful stellar year for our students. We had 6,557 industry certifications and digital tool certificates earned. And just to remind you, digital tool certificates, we refer to them as junior certs. They're written for grades 5 through 8. And they're wonderful achievements for students in those grades to prepare for the industry certifications in high school. It gets them excited and interested in CTE at the middle school grades. We went into lockdown in, right before testing season, as we call it, in 2019-20, and that's why you'll see that blue bar drop. And we went down to 4,562 certs and digital tools earned. And we were on track to exceed 2018-19. So that was an unfortunate hit to our achievement. However, in 2021, I included a little orange graph there. So you can see as of January 31st of '21, 527 industry certs and digital tools were earned. We start to test on a large scale in March and April. The students begin to test. But I wanted to compare that to January 31st of this year, where 782 industry search and digital tools have been earned. And so I wanted you to know that we are at a better pace of achievement this year than we were last year. So that's also encouraging. We have been anticipating this trend. I'm hanging on that other slide for just a second. That's okay. That's okay. We've been anticipating this trend for the last few years in spite of COVID because at the state level, as you are also aware, the state issues something called the CAPE Funding List, the Career and Professional Education Act list. And it has about 300 industry certs and digital tool certificates that if a student achieves that, the district receives bonus dollars back. So that's been a wonderful way for schools and districts to supplementally help CTE programs in their schools. But we've been anticipating that the state would begin paring down that list and making it a little more restrictive because of the dollars associated with that list. So with that in mind, we've been focusing more on workplace learning experiences, community partnerships, and also opportunities for career dual enrollment. One of the opportunities that has come to us recently is through the ESER 2 grant, and it is a career dual enrollment grant for over $600,000. Mary Graham in our department in CTE has worked very hard to create dual enrollment agreements with Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University, which you are aware has aerospace technology program at Benita Springs High School. And we will also be increasing it at Island Coast High School. She's also worked to create a dual enrollment articulation agreement with Gateway College as an affiliation of the University of Florida for wastewater treatment, which is a very, very high-demand occupation locally, regionally, and throughout the state. And then the other career dual enrollment articulation agreement that we're excited about is with our district partner to the north, Charlotte County. And they have invested so much time, effort, and money into creating an airframe mechanics program, so where they're actually training mechanics to work on airplanes. So instead of trying to duplicate their effort, we're partnering with them. And so now we will have an opportunity for our students to complete the dual enrollment portion at Charlotte Technical College. So the big question for our team through all of this is how will we support these three new programs for career dual enrollment? And I'd also like to tell you, career dual enrollment is special because you do not have to have as high of a GPA as you would in regular college dual enrollment as a high school student. So it is an opportunity for you to earn college credit, but maybe your GPA is a little bit lower in high school. So this grant funded through the state from ESER 2 for career dual enrollment will allow us to support a portion of the teaching units, the curriculum, and equipment for these programs. So wastewater treatment, aerospace technologies, and then airframe mechanic. So we're very excited about that. Now to the next slide. So speaking of partners, we could not do a greater majority of the things we do for our students without our community partners. And we have worked very hard over the last few years to increase... Ms. Gina Vannelli spoke of it earlier about telling our story. So we, anytime that we're asked to present at a chamber event or any other community organization, we're delighted to do so, and it really has increased the number of business partners, which was an ask of the board a couple of years ago. And you can see, we went from four. Now remember, these are directly related to career and tech ed. The school district has a robust network of business partners from the school level on up to the district office. But the board in 2018-19 said, how many are directly working with CTE? And at that time, we had four, so we could only go up, which was awesome. And 2019-20, we went up to 44. Our goal, in 2021, we were up to 185. And our goal this year was for 200, but as of January 31st, we're already at 227 business partners associated with career and tech ed. So we're very excited about that. Part of that, other than being open to speak with the community and network, we have career advisory boards. So this is a career advisory board at each high school that is created to weigh in on the different academies, not only to be a support network for that school, but also to provide insight as to what the workforce needs. And on the right hand of that slide, I just wanted to do some gratitude checks with a couple of our business partners who have been so kind to us this year. Hertz came through with a $10,000 donation to our teaching academies to help provide some textbooks and extra stuff for our high school teaching academies. And they've also offered to donate a $6,000 printer that CTE can use for marketing on behalf of all of the academies. So we're very thankful to Hertz for that. Suncoast Credit Union, their foundation donated $150,000 to our CTE programs this year alone. $80,000 of that is going to support a brand-new program at Fort Myers High School, an Outboard Marine Academy program, which is an in-demand occupation in our community. And so we're very excited. We would not have been able to start that program without the donation from Suncoast. They're also helping with agriculture programs and also supporting our culinary arts programs. And then at the top, the Lee County Economic Development Office. I would like to note, this is in process. This is not yet approved, but we stand to be in partnership with them in the next coming months for a grant for $750,000. And this will allow us to offer micro credentials in the area of soft skills to adult learners in our community. So we're very excited about that. And then our final goal deals with adult education, and we have just been looking to improve. How many of our adult students right now? We have over 1,700 adult students enrolled in our GED preparation and English language learner classes at eight locations throughout the district and also an online program. And really, we don't want them to just register and pay their fee. We want them to hang around, and the learning gains measure starts at 12 hours. So our goal with our adult learners over the last few years is to look at, how can we make sure they're not just registering, but they're staying with us? And they're getting to where they need to go to either be English language proficient or achieve their GED? And that's just looking how we're progressing at that, and we've already exceeded our goal for this academic year.
Okay, then coupling with CTE, and Ms. Davis is a companion of advanced courses and the exam results. And so you can see here is a five-year trend of the number of exams taken for students 9-12, and then that is in the bar graph. And then in the line graph is the percentage success rate. One thing I do want to point out there is you'll see a star in the 19-20. That's a reflection of the year in which COVID hit in March, April, and a lot of the assessments developed alternative methods for measurement. And so some of them were portfolios or other factors. And so that may be a reflection of a unique time period in those results, but overall, the trend is positive, and you can see that moving in that direction. But we did want to point that out. And that takes us to the next slide, which is the district's college and career acceleration component, which is a combination of all of these factors. It's a combination of CTE and advanced tests, et cetera. And the most recent result we would have is from last school year, the conclusion of last school year, but that would affect us on the last school grade model at 63%. That's a percentage of graduating seniors who have earned at least one of these recognitions, whether it's an advanced test or an industry certification, a dual enrollment, et cetera. So there's a variety of different ways in which they can do it, but 63% of our graduating seniors in the most recent cohort demonstrated that. We're waiting for the results for this school year to come in from the state sometime, usually in the spring, about this time is when we get it. So when we have an update on that, we'll provide it as well. But you can see again, a positive trend line there. And then lastly, from our school district equity report, the percentage of students based on the ethnic identification that are enrolled in an advanced course. And again, you can see a positive trend in all of these, an increase across the board there. So I think at that point, we want to stop. There is a period here for questions about that data. I do want to point out that that's historic trend data. We are going to talk next about the current progress monitoring data for this school year. That's the next section of this.
Thank you very much, Dr. K. So at this point, you've heard a little bit about early learning from Mary Grace. Dr. K gave you a little bit of our local context, what our students look like as a whole, and they talked to you about our college and career acceleration as well as adult ed. So we wanted to pause there before we got into the mid-year progress monitoring data on academics and then the response to the data. That'll be next. So any questions in that first area?
I have one quick question. Is there any data, and if you're going to cover this in the academic piece coming up next, you can hold on. Data regarding having homogeneous groups. In other words, there are some schools that have a large amount of students in the same level. And I would like to hear, how is that? And some schools are successful, which is wonderful, that they still have, like, I think Hans Marsh Middle has like 90% Level Ones, but they're still achieving. And that kind of goes across the board to a lot of things, leadership and staffing and all of that type of thing. But is there any type of data that addresses having the same level of students, you know, in large numbers in the same school?
I'd like to preface it with, you must have some ability to read our minds, because in our department last week, we were talking about exactly that type of thing that we wanted to learn more about, to be candid, because we see some interesting phenomena when we start looking at it that way. So I do want to point out, in the next section, when we look at the progress monitoring data, one of the things we're going to do across all these disciplines is stratify by prior level. So how are Level Ones doing, Level Twos doing, Level Threes? And so just to give a personal experience, I've worked at many different, you know, a couple of different types of schools in our district, and I'm aware of how that can impact the overall number. And so when we try to stratify by prior level, we're trying to account as much as possible for those diverse student populations. However, to your point, you know, as we're looking at this, we're starting to think, how can we look even more deeply at that? It's not just stratifying by these prior levels, but the total composition and how that may have broader influences. I think that's something that we want to continue to explore more. So we will address it to an extent in the next section, but if it's still not fully addressed, then I think that we have more follow-up on that.
We can bring it up later. But I mean, to me, it took me back to proximity, which is what we were talking about with proximity, was not having that situation, but having a more level across the board, which would allow us to attract different teachers as well. And there's just so many things that go into it. So I just really think that it's really, really important, because you can see it, it's okay at one school, and in another school, it's like the kiss of death. So how do, how do we level that off? So that, I'm sure, is a question. I had one other thing, but I forgot it, so I must not have supposed to have been asking. And I have to take leave. I just want to say before I leave, thank you all so much. Oh, that was the other thing. The attendance program, yay, you guys are doing awesome. I was in a school, elementary school, I walked in on Friday, and this little guy was coming in, and the principal was just praising him that he was there that day. And she says, oh, he's been here every day this week. And she whispered to me, do you know how many days out he has this year? It was like 60-something. And he's like first or second grade. So I told him that I was going to check on him every week, and that at the end of the month, I'd come and we'd have lunch together. And he was just like, okay, yeah, we can do this. But thank you, thank you, thank you for unearthing and realizing, we can't teach you if you're not here, and all that you're doing for that, and the numbers are showing it. So congratulations to everybody here and in the schools that are doing everything to get kids there.
Thank you, Ms. Gins. I want to make sure that, you know, Tammy Scott and the Student Services team get full credit for that. They've really, we identified the barrier, and they just went right to work on it and has kept it in the forefront. So I want to make sure if we see Tammy, Scott, and team, say thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, first, for Ms. Davis, I just wanted to say, I love the information that you've put forth about CTE, both just a few minutes ago and earlier. The one question that I have, it's, I think it's something, actually, I brought up quite a while back, the possibility of some academy sharing. In other words, if we have a particular, if we have an academy at a certain school, and maybe there are slots available to have students from another high school, and this would be, I'm thinking for juniors and seniors mostly, that could have their own transportation, and that we could work out something that, if there are available slots, and this is something that a student, let's say it's between Dunbar and South Fort Myers or wherever, that could be a possibility, that it could be, you know, I mean, I was in a school district where we didn't have the academies per se, but we had, you know, vocational school, that kind of thing, and that idea of the shared time, your academics at your homeschool, and then, you know, if that could be worked out, it might be really cost-effective for our students. Okay, and then I have a couple things for Dr. K. On your slide, academically vulnerable, do you have the demographics on that, including financial and ethnic? You don't have to give it to me right now, but do you have those available easily?
Ms. Vaughn, what slide was that? I think she referred to the key points slide that...
It's the one, it was called academically vulnerable.
Right. We, yeah, that term was used to refer to their prior academic level to characterize them. So other way of looking, other ways of looking at that or classifying them socioeconomically or any other ways, we certainly can provide that information.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that. Okay, on the slide, graduation trends comparing Lee County with our charters. I'm going to say that that slide is somewhat misleading, because with charters, it groups in all the charters. I'd be interested in seeing the comparison between our district schools and our traditional high schools like Oasis, Southwest Florida Collegiate, and Gateway versus the alternative schools. I'm particularly interested in, you know, did our, the schools that I just, the three that I just mentioned, that are like regular four-year high schools, did they maintain at the same rate that we did in our, in all of our schools are, you know, traditional high schools? And did our alternative schools suffer losses? So I know all of that can be separately looked up on DOE site, which is a chore.
We can refer to it more conveniently.
Yeah, it's, I always have to reserve a lot of time to find all of that. But I'm just commenting that that might have been a better snapshot of what we're, of what we're talking about. And then finally, the slide, the percentage participating in advanced courses. Okay, and I know that in part, I'm not going to explore that right now, but I know in part, since we have moved to putting ACE, the ACE language, no.
General paper.
Language of Literature, a seventh-grade course in high schools instead of English, traditional English. But, take both. But that probably has impacted some. But the thing, and actually, this comes from the one-on-one meeting, so let's see if your brains process our contract that we did about a year ago with equal opportunity schools, and the whole purpose of that contract was to increase that participation. And I know, I'm bringing it up again now, it was something I brought up on the one-on-one. What has been the impact? Can you tell me what the impact has been?
And we, we can be able to share with you, with equal opportunity schools, what did we spend, and then what was provided from that as well. Happy to do that and make sure we get that.
Maybe Mr. Simmons would know, because it seems to me you came in and talked to me about it that one day a year ago in between our meetings. But we spent some money on that program, and so I would hope that they've had an impact. If any of you, you remember about equal opportunity schools. I had my doubts, but prove me wrong. And finally, I'm going back to one of my themes. I would like to know as part of this, or maybe you're going to bring it up later, but what are we doing for our best and brightest? And when I say the best and brightest, I'm talking about our students who are making, like on an AP test, fours and fives, who as sophomores taking PSAT, not officially, but to see that are scoring in those upper percentiles? Because I didn't see any movement for us in the National Merit, PSAT qual, the National Merit qualifying test. We had half the number of finalists that Collier had, and we are twice the size. So I am still, this is one of my, hey, I have till November, and I'm still pushing on this, because I'm not running again, in case you didn't know. But I have till November, and I'm not giving up on that push, because I have a lot of experience over the years, both here and before. And I really feel like we just don't spend the time and effort that we should on our best and brightest, and our kids are just as smart as any of the kids in the state. So let's see them shine.
And if I could respond to that, when Dr. K first got here, that's, no, those are great questions, and thank you. But when Dr. K first got here, he heard you, and he put together, we put together an action plan on how we were addressing our National Merit scholars. So we'll pull that back out. I know we've shared before, but we'll pull it back out and give you an update on where we are, because I think that would be a really good piece, because that is a component of part of the work that Dr. K and his team have done, because we not only heard you, but validated, yes, you're right. That's an area that certainly needed to have a light shined on it, and it did.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Fratika?
Hi, two quick questions. The slide 11, Teaching Strategies Gold, is that the state-required test?
No, that is not the state-required test. That is an assessment that is aligned with state standards and Head Start outcomes framework. The state test is the VPK, we refer to it the VPK test. It's the Star Literacy Test, and those were, there was a slide that had those measures of AP1, Assessment Period II, and then one for the... 2, and then we'll do it again at the end. And that's one of the, you know, that's been one of the conversations over many years is that the assessment measure that we use to measure school readiness is not always developmentally appropriate, doesn't align, and so there's conflicting data on what we see as being school-ready when they enter. But that is all beginning to change. And so next year, you know, we look forward to having a more aligned kindergarten readiness assessment that aligns with, you know, what we're doing on the early learning side. So there was, there was just a disconnect and it's been a conversation for years. And I have been on a state committee where, you know, we were working to make those changes and we're finally getting there, which is really exciting. So next year's data, when I sit here and share with you, we are hoping to see a much better alignment in true readiness scores. The other thing that I'd like to mention is, when you look at the state readiness scores, that's for all 6,000-plus children coming in, we're currently serving like 880 children. So we're just, you know, the ones that we're touching and the ones that we're teaching and moving forward is just a very small percentage of that data. But we're also working on expansion and working with our community partners to align what we're doing in Lee County with private providers. And so our children, no matter where they are, are being fully prepared to come into our public schools and thrive in kindergarten.
All right, good. I appreciate that. And this might be a little bit off-subject, but something for us to be thinking about is the new testing scheme that will come out of Tallahassee. It's my understanding that teachers went up and advocated for them themselves and their own students. And the unfortunate side effect was that the legislature took out of teacher testimony that there's too much district testing. So the state doesn't necessarily intend to decrease state-required testing as much as they intend to tie our hands. And I'm not always sure the state testing instrument that they use is best. And I think that's why we have district testing, because we know how to test our kids and we know how to best gather that data. So I just, I know that's sort of an aside, but I want us to start thinking about what that might look like. Although I'm hearing iReady might be used at the state level, which I think we're already using.
We are using iReady, but the state picked a product called Renaissance. And so that'll be, that'll be for us to learn and as we are, we are actually, the five of us will be heading off to a state conference here in a couple of weeks and that'll be the main topic, will be state assessments.
Okay. And then my other comment was, how do you get kids interested in wastewater treatment?
Rita.
Who wants to take that class? Is Mike Rowe volunteering time here or what's going on with that?
Incredible Marketing Plan?
Printer then that you purchased, yes.
The printer donated from Hertz will help with that. We, I think it's really getting them in there first for a tour so that they can see the opportunities, just like when we brought more construction into our schools that, you know, there is an IT group and you're not just on a roof, there's all different aspects. And then I think when they hear what they can make entry level and then with the certification that we're gonna be offering, I think that that will be appealing as well.
Wastewater treatment appealing. Interesting. Only you can make it sound that way.
Well, I think we're just gonna call it water treatment. Remove waste from there.
Have to take the tour, they give tours.
Those are my questions. Thank you, guys.
Do you have any questions?
I just have, I want to thank my colleagues for their questions, first of all, 'cause that answered some of mine. But I have one for Ms. Davis. So to what do you credit the big increase in CTE business partners in a short period of time?
A couple things.
I would definitely say our commitment, CTE as a team, to avail ourselves to presentations and networking opportunities outside of the district office. We've also been able through grants to increase the number of team members. And so that's allowed us to be in more places at one time. That's been phenomenal. And then having the career advisory boards at each high school, that brings in more input and connection. And also, I was very fortunate to participate in Leadership Lee County and the network, networking and connections I made, and I'm never shy to ask for help or assistance, you know, on behalf of our students, that was phenomenal as well. So many different facets to that.
Great. And telling the story like Mrs. Givinelli says is definitely part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you, Ms. G?
So thank you, Ms. Fisher, for that, 'cause actually I was gonna ask that same question because that's what my notes are, you know, yay to the increased business partners, you know. Our stakeholders are so important. And so I just want to, you know, give you kudos and thank you for that increased, the partners, I'm just so excited about that because it is, that is about telling the story. And the more people you tell, the more people will tell the story for us. So I just see the value in that and so I just, I'm so glad that y'all have embraced that and, and I mean, the data doesn't lie on that one, so I appreciate it. Thank you. That was my notes. Instructional time, I'm gonna be curious about that, so bring to our numbers because I think that's really important. But the graduation rates back for nineteen, it's nineteen, I think it's nineteen and twenty is when the governor kinda gave everybody a pass. So that's hard to use that data, unfortunately. It kind of hurts us, we kinda have to pretend like that year didn't happen, but that's kinda hard 'cause we still keep living it. But, and go back to the prior numbers and I think that we have to kind of probably focus on those, 'cause I think that's the, probably the true number to really compare to. But, so thank you for that work, 'cause I know it's a daunting task. Trying to get out ahead of that is probably very difficult.
And we would agree with you about that graduation number. We knew that the state provided a lot of opportunities for our students and our students took full advantage of those opportunities. And so when we are looking at data, oftentimes we look past last year to see what was a standard year, but it's different kids doing it different time. And that's our challenge is the kids walking in, it's just, it's just different. And then the last piece, Ms. Givinelli, I want to say is the career academies at each school, we can't underscore that enough because every high school has a different career academy. And when you have professionals in the community that are engaged with the teachers in the building, that are teaching that content, to build that partnership, but then also giving advice on whether or not we're going down the right path with that, with that industry. And then the changes that are happening in the future to help us guide, it might be time for us to move in a different direction with this academy. We should think about X, Y, and Z. And so I do want to thank Rita and her team for that, 'cause it's a commitment, but also at our schools, our principals embraced a new, a new concept inside of their building and really had to make sure they created that structure for them. So thank you, Rita, as well.
Yeah. And I'm just gonna add to that as well, because I know with the advisory committees at the schools and as everybody was saying, the community partnerships are, I mean, you need that, that's like a lifeline. And it does, because when they have the need, they know what they need from us, they know what we need to produce. So with them guiding us, that really helps a lot. And that's even at Community Resources from early childhood on. I mean, all of that is really important and I think, I thank all of you. Great job.
Thank you. And thank you, Mary Grace and Rita, for being up here. And Dr. K is gonna move on. Now we're gonna get really into the meat as well. So now we're gonna talk about academic progress monitoring and then a response to the data from our executive directors and our curriculum team. So Dr. K?
All right. Thank you very much. So as Dr. Spire alluded to, all the data we looked up at this point too is historic data. That stuff's on the books, it's already settled in and so it's more trend, historical data. Now we're gonna look at more what we would consider like living data. It's what's going on in this school year, right now, kinda what are we witnessing and gathering? So this is our progress monitor, this is our mid-year. So just to give everyone a refresher, the district conducts progress monitoring three times a year, typically quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, for the most part, that's the way it works. And then we have our FSAs or EOCs in quarter four. So when we're looking at these data, the progress monitoring, we're looking at our school-grade cohort of students. So for the most part, grades three through 10, your FSAs, your EOCs, that kind of stuff that we're required to track for the progress monitoring. And for the purposes of understanding how things are going or how we are doing, we wanted to compare it to where we were at these points last year. So you'll see a bar graph that shows last year at this time and then this year at this time for each quarter. Obviously, quarter three and quarter four, or quarter three and final, we don't have filled in yet because they're TBD. We do begin our quarter three progress monitoring actually today, ironically. So this is, well, you know, in a couple of weeks, we should have more information on that. But one of the things that I want to point out that you'll see as a consistent trend, and it goes back to what we were talking about when we first started the presentation, is how we are at an intersection of statewide phenomena and then a local phenomenon, a local context as well. So all these things are tributaries to these data here that you'll see. And so the first slide here is our ELA slide, our English Language Arts. So this is grades three through 10. This includes proficiency, which is the large one, and then the two learning gain components, learning gains and then L25 learning gains. They're presented that way just because it got it on one slide, made it easy to see. It's not, one is not more important than the other. But what you'll see is the proficiency trends are down from last year in terms of ELA proficiency. Interestingly, or what would seem like ironic or paradoxical, is that the learning gains are higher slightly, at least in the learning gains proficient, the learning gains in the top right. And so what we want to talk about a little bit is how can proficiency be down and learning gains be up slightly? That seems like it would be a contradiction, but I wanna, the next slide is really gonna get into the meat of this, but just to kinda keep that in mind. So we look at this next slide, this is how we really want to capture these data points, right? So the first thing you'll see on the left is the multicolored columns, which is the composition of our ELA cohort. So when you roll up all of these students, grades three through 10, who are, were projecting to take an FSA this year, the percentage of each of their prior year level. So for example, if you're looking at seventh graders this year, what percentage of them scored as a one through five on the grade six FSA ELA? So their prior year level. This gives you a bit of a read on the composition of your group. And one of the things, as Ms. Gittens, I thought, brought up, she had very, very good ability to forecast where this was headed, was composition really matters. Composition matters a lot when you're looking at it at the school level or at the district level. Composition's very important. And one of the things you'll see right off the bat is the increase in prior year Level One students in our ELA cohort. What that means is that this year, coming into our, into our classrooms, is a greater percentage of students who were substantially below proficient on their ELA performance the prior year. This goes back to Ms. Vaughn's question, clarifying that term academically vulnerable. What did we mean by that exactly? And in this case, we're looking specifically at their academic history based on their prior year FSA ELA score. And so two years ago, it was 22% and coming in now, it's 26% our prior year Level Ones. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see these horizontal bars demonstrating the performance on the quarter-two progress monitoring of our students in our ELA cohort when you stratify it by their prior year academic level. So if we start at the very top, how are the prior year Level Fives performing two years ago and then this year, right? Or last year and this year, I should say, not two years, the two years ago, prior year Level Fives and rolling into last year. So last year at this time, our prior year Level Fives, and I gotta squint here, I should have made a little bigger, but, it looks like 97.3 if I can glance over in Cindy's computer there. And then this year, you'll see in the darker shade, it's 98.1%. So an increase in performance of our prior year Level Fives. The counter to that is we have proportionally fewer Level Fives than we did last year. So while they're outperforming last year's Level Fives, we don't have as many of them from a compositional standpoint that we had in the past. And if you go back, if you remember back to that grade-five math comparing the state and the district in the grade-five math FSA outcomes, you'll remember that there is a substantial increase in Level Ones, an increase in Level Twos, and then a decrease in Threes, Fours, and Fives. And so when we look at the composition, it's demonstrated here on the left and then the performance on the right. And one of the key takeaways we would find is that for the most part across our disciplines, ELA, math, science, and social studies, our students are outperforming their levels the prior year, with the exception of Level One students. And that'll be something you'll see demonstrated right here, right? So Level Five, Four, Three, Two students are outperforming their prior year, sometimes by what, you know, looks like a substantial clip, although that's something we can talk about, what is a substantial number. But at the Level One is the only point where you see decreased performance, right? The counter to that is, we have more Level Ones than we had in the past. So when you think about how can proficiency be down and learning gains be up and performance across most of our strata be up, this is how it happens, is your composition changes and you have more students who are substantially below or academically vulnerable, but your performing, performance is higher across most of those levels, it's just the composition has shifted. So when we go to now mathematics, you'll see the similar phenomenon. Proficiency is down quarter one and quarter two in the progress monitoring. The overall proficiency, right, grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, algebra, geometry, these are all these students rolled up, yet our learning gains and our L25 learning gains are at a higher level than at this point last year. Again, so proficiency's down, learning gains are up. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see here is where there is a serious change in the composition of our mathematics cohort. Last year, this time, we brought in 22% of our students were prior year Level Ones. This year, it's 33%. Again, that tracks, just like you saw with that grade-five math cohort, statewide, locally, the phenomena are similar, they're behaving similarly. But when you bring in such a higher percentage of students who have such unique academic vulnerabilities, performance overall is going to likely come down, even if your performance by the strata are going up. And this was an example in mathematics where every one of those prior year levels, even the prior year Level Ones, a very slight amount, but they are outperforming last year's Level Ones, but you have such a higher number of them, right? Science, this would include your grade-five, your elementary science, your grade-eight science, and then your biology cohorts of students. So we don't have learning gains associated with the science, it's just proficiency, just a pure output. One thing I do want to point out here is that the quarter one, for both of these and social studies, the quarter-one progress monitoring last year was delivered at the end of the quarter, this year is at the beginning of the quarter. So comparing quarter-one numbers is not gonna be a great apples-to-apples, but quarter-two at the same time, so they would've caught up chronologically to each other and you see a slight decrease again in proficiency. When we go to the cohort itself, you'll see an increase in your prior year Level Ones at 10%. The composition has changed for your science cohort. Again, this all goes back to that learning, mislearning or learning loss characterized by the last year and a half. But again, a similar phenomenon with our ELA, levels prior year, levels Five, Four, Three, and Two are all outperforming their peers from the prior year. Again, these are different students, but breaking them down by prior year academic level, prior year Level Ones slightly underperforming. And that again is now your largest cross-section of a cohort. And then social studies, akin to science, the progress monitoring dates, last year it was at the end of the quarter, this year it's at the beginning of the quarter. So again, I would not really compare the quarter Ones too much, but by quarter-two, similar to science, it gets very close, but it's still underperforming from last year. And then we break it down by composition and by achievement, by stratified level, you'll see again the composition, your Level Ones and Twos, not quite to the effect of science, but still higher than Level Ones and Twos. But performance, just like science and ELA, outperforming Levels Five, Four, Three, and Two. But again, your Level One students underperforming slightly from last year. So these data kinda tell the story of what we were getting at in the beginning of what's happening statewide, what is happening locally in Lee County. And when we talk about, yes, our proficiency is down, but it's not exactly a similar composition of students. So when we break it down by prior year level, we start to see these stories unfold. And again, to be candid, Levels Five, Four, Three, and Two generally are outperforming. Level One students are not outperforming last year. And so that's one way to stratify it and look at it in that sense. So I believe at this point, I turn it over to Ms. Mayer for the response from executive leadership.
So Dr. Spire began today on page seven and he listed four barriers that came out during our data chat. So as we were meeting with principals, Dr. Spire had these little barriers, these little road barriers up on our, in our conference room. And he would, you know, kinda tally, some way in his mind or on a sheet of paper, he was tallying, who's saying that this is a barrier for us? And these four, the four, chronic absences, student vacancies, social and emotional, behavioral, and transportation were our big four. Well, I, when I did the slide, I broke down our absentee for staff and students. So when you see five there, just wanted to give you a little background on why it does exactly line up there. Vacancies for this year, it was the first time ever that I had had principals from the West Zone and the South Zone call me and tell me, we can't fill positions. We advertised and two people are applying. And so their hearts were hurting for the East Zone, 'cause usually we have great West Zone principals out there and if they get a 40 applicants, they'll send their names over to the East Zone and say, hey, these are really top candidates, interview them, they, you know, I didn't have a position, but they're great. We didn't have that occur this year. So Dr. Savage, and I think it was June 30th, and I'm sorry if I apologize if I'm missing the date that he came in and met with us, but he came in with a list of things that he wanted us to do to help fill these classrooms with certified teachers. And one of his, one of his goals was- And one of his, one of his goals was to pay teachers more to teach through their planning. Now, as I'm going to talk about this, there's pros, you know? We've got a certified teacher in there in front of your child, but there's also cons. That teacher doesn't have the opportunity now to go plan with their fellow teachers. Teacher efficacy, teachers collaborating, Clayton and I planning together, social studies lesson. We're talking about our data, we're, we're planning our lessons together. And then we go out and teach and we come back and look at that. Those are true PLCs and how they should happen. And they do happen with great teachers. And our, but some of our best teachers were stepping up because they're amazing. Even before there was any money offered to them, they stepped up and they said, I'll cover. Cause if it were my child, I wouldn't want them to be taught by anybody other than a great teacher. And I'm going to do that. I don't want them to be taught by a substitute. I, I know each of you, if you were out there teaching, that's what you would have done also. You said, I'll give up my planning, I'll go teach. And I'll, I'll make sure those kids have a great teacher in the classroom in front of them. So our teachers did that. We finally came to an agreement and it was just this semester started. And the teachers are getting paid additional money to teach through their planning. There's more at the elementary level, they get for more kids in the classroom because they don't get planning like the other levels saying. You know, they work nonstop, they walk their babies to every special. And so their planning time is very narrow, it's very short time period. And so our elementary teachers get more kids. So let's say there's a teacher and you can't fill that classroom with 20 students or 18 or whatever they're putting in those classrooms. They take in, they go count and divide it between four teachers at that grade level and put, you know, four to five kids in each classroom. So they're still being taught by a certified teacher. So that was a barrier they had to overcome because now these teachers that were putting teaching through planning, like I said, they're not able to participate. Now, schools have been very creative and said, okay, how can we? The middle level, I talked to my principals over the summer and we were working on our master schedule. And we were seeing, we weren't able to hire teachers. I said, let's think about what we're doing. In the past, we'd always had all of our language arts teachers off. So they could plan collaboratively and that high school or eighth grade teacher could talk to the seventh grade teacher about, hey, here's some gaps that we're seeing, what are you doing to help us? And down to sixth grade, but we stopped it this year. And so sixth grade planned was off and planned together. Seventh grade had a different period and eighth grade had a different. So what I could do then was I could go and I could see that teacher. And Ms. Vaughn is a language arts teacher, I would go to her and say, hey, I've got an open sixth grade class. There's nobody to teach, can you help me cover? So she would come in and maybe one of her colleagues from seventh grade would step in. So the students were still getting a certified teacher in that area to keep us moving forward. So we, we put a lot of things in place and did a lot of strategic planning. Again, as soon as we realized over the summer, we weren't able to hire teachers. So there was a lot put in place. Then we start, I'll talk a little bit about chronic student absences. Brainchild of Dr. Spiro was to have connect with Lee. And so again, the district staff, he said, we're not putting this on our schools. He came to us and he goes, this is on us. So everybody down here that has a certificate has taught. I taught, I said, don't give me middle school, I haven't been in math in a while. Said, let me do the elementary school. So I covered and this one little boy kept coming on, you know? And he wanted to meet with me all the time. He really knew the math, he just, he liked having that conversation. But that's during the school day. So if a child's at home, they're missing school, they're out for 10 days or whatever, they can go on connect with Lee, they have a teacher there to talk with them. Christine Christensen organizes that, that's above and beyond her normal job she does. And she's doing that in, in addition to her job. Same thing with all of our coaches. So I want you to know that the coaches down here, the directors down here, executive directors down here, we stepped up. And so it's a two hours, you agree to two hours. And you might do it two times a week, three times a week, but to cover this. So there's that opportunity for the students to have someone to reach out to. We just started calling home. They say I'm pretty loud. I've actually tried to be quiet sitting up here. But on Friday, Marcia actually heard me with a conversation with a parent on the phone about her child who's been absent and missed 36 days. And we talked through the reason and, you know, it was transportation mostly. And the student she thought was in school because she looked at her camera. And sometimes he wasn't there on, at home, but he also wasn't in the building. So she's working with the school and I asked the school to reach out. And they did a great Google Doc, I think it was Tammy Scott, I want to give credit to the right person, but I believe it was Tammy, that it's just a drop down, you just click on it and you drop down. And so again, all of the district staff, we're, we're doing those calls. So our social workers are already out there, they've already been to homes, they've done what they can. But we're reaching out and trying to do what we can to support them. Full-time social workers in the building, they've sent home letters, they've gone to the home. But sometimes again, just one more phone call in the evening where mom has the time to sit and talk to me or, you know, about why their child's not in school. Some of them are afraid, some of them have lost, I had one I talked to that they had lost a grandparent to COVID. And the child was a young child and was, was a little bit nervous about going to school. And so I said, have they talked to their school counselor? And she said, no, I haven't thought about that. And I said, that would be your next step. So, and, and so staff absences, what did we do there? So I'm going to tell you as a tier, I'm the last group is middle school. So substitutes are gone. Lovely high schools, you guys just sweep them up early in the morning and they love working high school hours. They're in, they're out. Middle school, we're kind of late on getting them. All the schools, a high school, middle school, elementary school, we've all had difficulty getting substitutes this year. It's been a real concern heavy on our hearts, but our schools have done an amazing job. When I, my schools, most of them and their schools are covering their classrooms. Yes, they're using their coaches, they're using everybody that's on campus to try to cover because we are paying pairs. Again, that was one of Dr. Savage's that I talked about earlier. I think, I gave the date of June 30th, Dr. Savage, if I have the wrong date, I apologize. That list of things you wanted to get done. But we are doing everything we can to help the, help our schools. I'm going to tell you that. So coverage when they ask us and I reach out. And again, our district's team, our coaches, they're out supporting the schools as it is because we have tiered approach. Shannon's going to talk, so I don't want to steal her thunder. But she's going to talk about our tiered approach to our schools and how we support the schools. So again, at one school, you know, Debbie, you might need more help with, you know, let's say you teach social studies and you might need help with your L level ones, but not your level fives. We're drilling down in the data that detailed. So we know who do we need to go help her with? And so we send our coaches out, we send our coordinators out to help those. It doesn't happen to everybody. You might have Chris who's high flying and she's not having any issues whatsoever. You know, she's flying through there and Ms. Giovanni, she's not having any, Giovanni, she's not having any issues either. So we don't address them. So it's pinpointed by who has the need. So very targeted intervention and support. Our Google Sheets, we put in the Google Sheets so they can just type in our principals. And we have principals that need help with parent pickup, they, parent drop off in the morning, opening those doors, lunch duty. And that Google document is constantly, it was created, and I think it was again, Dr. Spiro, I'm giving him credit for that one, I believe. But that is filled out and those, if there need help, we send out there and we go. And again, it's our, a lot of our coaches and our directors that are going out and helping, and ourselves also. At parent pick, I, I helped out at Lamb's. So we're, we're out there, we're helping as much as we can. District coverage, I think I've already talked about our, our certified staff, they provide coverage still full-time, sometimes in classrooms teaching. We are all about helping them, but we also have other work to do with them. We have to create these exemplars so we can do that instructional cycle. So we know, no, they haven't mastered this standard. What are we doing to go back? So we, we have to create those. So that's, that's a work in progress. And so they still have work to do. And I want to say a big shout out to the coaches and, and directors and everybody else for working long nights, making sure they get all their work done. Because when you're doing some other job, like Christine, like I was talking about, you're doing another job, you still have to do your job. So those are all important things. Student behavior and mental health, we added deans. And I, our schools, I know when I met with my principals and talked to them, I said, when you add that additional dean and support, make sure that you're looking at somebody who's there, not to just take the child in discipline, that is there to support the child and make them feel safe and comfortable. And let them, somebody to talk to as they walk them back to class, maybe they're late for a class and they go ahead and walk them to the room, find out why, you know? What, what's going on? Did they get off the bus or didn't get the bus at all and they walked all the way to school? So they're hot and they're frustrated? Find out what the why is. So we really worked on that. School counselors are truly our last resort in putting in a classroom. And I asked my, when it was brought up, how many of them are going out into classrooms and teaching? I didn't have any at the middle level. They just, we are taking that seriously. These kids need someone to go see. I know for elementary, they don't, they had, they don't have as many people and bodies as we do sometimes. And so it's difficult for them. And I think they have covered some. But at our level, we've tried our very best. In our tier three schools, we've used Esther Dollars. And I will apologize also on the funding source, there should have been money bags all the way down on my sheet. So that's, I put the name there, but money bags, money bags. So thank you for those. So resources to support them and I'll get done, I'm a long-winded, sorry. Transportation, we've adjusted at secondary, again, we're able to, Clay and I, to look at schedules. So if they're missing Mrs. Vaughn's first period ELA class every day because the bus is late getting there, you know, and there, she's, she's frustrated. She comes and says, hey, this kid's late. We look at the bus group and our, our principals and our APCs are readjusting their schedules to say, let's put that elective first and maybe there are core classes later in the day. So we have really put a lot of processes in place to ensure student learning to the best of our ability. It's not transportation's fault, they just can't get them here, they can't get drivers. So we're doing on our end academic wise, as many things as we can. Some of our schools are having after school when their kids are not picked up till late, their buses, you know, maybe 30 minutes to an hour late, we're using that for tutoring time. Everybody open up, we have, we're blessed to have iReady, thank you, Esther Dollars also, money bags. So those, that we open up those computers and the students are sitting there working and they're getting their time. And there's teachers in there and our teachers are such a blessing this year. They're tired and they're worn out, but they're walking. I've been in some of the schools in the afternoon and there's five or six teachers and they're not paid to stay. But they're walking between those kids and they're helping them with their iReady lessons. So it's really powerful and I'm really grateful for the district I work in and who I work with. Working families to address their individual needs. I had a principal who went and picked up children with the parent's permission because they were already at their work and the kids were standing at the bus stop and they were playing the game and they went home, even though the bus said they were coming. And their friends all knew on their phones, the bus was coming. But they went home and so the, the principal actually said, hey, if it's okay, because they've missed quite a few days. So we put quite a few things in place. I'm going to finish up with one thing in my morning reading this morning. There was something about oneness being, that I read about. And I will say as a district, the pandemic has really brought us to, I feel like a team of one. We sit in with Roger Lloyd or we sit in and I'll, I'll miss somebody. But in whatever department, we are all focused on student learning. And so every discussion from Kelly Letcher, how can I support them? What can I do? Amy Desmore, what can I do to support them? HR, I just want to say kudos to everybody that through this pandemic, we've made some really good decisions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burr.
Good afternoon. And since she mentioned the conversation she had in her office, I just want to tell you that it sounded contentious at the beginning, but at the end she had them eating out of her hand and they were thanking her for all of her support. So she does a great job on those conversations, even if it does get a little loud. So I want to talk to you a little bit about, well, I'm going to start off the conversation about our instructional cycle response. And so you can see that the first block on your screen, we have a human resources and academic services cross-divisional collaboration that we meet each week to talk about what's going on with the schools, with the principals, and how we can work in alignment to support, to provide the best possible support to the schools. So during those weekly meetings, when it's coming time for the, the monthly principal meetings, we develop an agenda of what's important for them to know at this time. What can we, how can we combine? How can we collaborate to make sure that the information that the principals need is forthcoming to them and it's timely? So that is, is how we start those meetings. After that, then we take the principal meeting agenda and we look at it and we say, what do the principal leads need to know in order to support their principal groups and the information that they're going to be getting at that next meeting? And we, and we target what happens at those principal lead meetings so that they have that needed information. For example, I'll give you the last cycle that we went through. At the, it was decided that the principals really needed an opportunity to develop a little bit more of a skill set in asking the specific questions of their PLCs that would help them move the student learning and teaching and instruction forward. We've been doing a book study with the principal leads called facilitating effective PLCs all year long. And that book has some really great information. But what is really important about it is it has some really strong protocols in the back of that book that you can use when you're specifically targeting something specific in the PLC. So one of those things was the questions that you need to ask to move the PLC from a PLC 101 to a PLC 201, take it up a step and make sure that we're really focusing on what's important. So we took the principal leads through a protocol of specific questions that they could be focusing on if it's a, if it's a student learning issue, if it's a teaching issue, if it's an assessment issue, if it's an intervention issue. What specific questions can you use to move that PLC along? After we did that protocol with them, we took them through a protocol of identifying pitfalls is what the chapter calls them, things that could go wrong in a PLC meeting. How to identify what that pitfall is? And then also what can you do to kind of overcome that pitfall and get the group moving forward again in a productive manner? So they received those two protocol trainings at the PLC, at the principal lead meeting, prior to the principal meeting. And then the, the curriculum department stepped in and gave them some very specific information about intervention strategies and skills and standards that they should be really focusing on right now to get the biggest bang for their buck and to help those kids fill in some of the gaps that we know are there for all levels. It doesn't matter what level you are, all kids have some gaps because of what's gone on in the last two years. So from, and then they were charged with two tasks from that principal lead meeting. They were going to take those protocols. They were going to, in the actual principal meeting, they were going to divide into their groups. And they were going to walk their principals through those same two protocols to get the information out to them at a, at a more concise level because it's easier when you have a smaller group to do that with. So they did that. Then their second task was to, from after that principal meeting, they were to structure their school visits to go out and visit PLCs in their assigned schools to help them facilitate those strategies that they had just learned at the principal meeting. To look for the things that, the questioning and to look for the pitfalls that were occurring. So those were their tasks. After that, the principal meeting, the, they were, the, they were provided a, I'm sorry, the principal leads, they were provided an overall, a higher level look at what the curriculum department was going to present for the intervention piece at the actual principal meeting. So from that, the A.D.s, all four of us have made it our mission to go from those principal meetings to go out to the schools. The principal leads were looking at PLCs. We were going to look at the actual interventions that were occurring in the building. And we wanted to look at interventions for all levels to Ms. Vaughn's point. Because the higher level kids also neither need some gaps filled or they need some extension that you can provide in that intervention block. So we have been going out since then, we're not through all of the schools, but we have gone out and we have also identified some patterns and some things that then we can as a collective group focus on to bring some more information back to the schools and help, hopefully, hopefully provide them a more systematic approach to the work that they do. And so from this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Quisenberry, I believe is next. And Dr. Quisenberry is going to take us through the next three blocks on our slide.
Yeah. So how do we continue that instructional system into our schools? So we're, we're high level, right? We're at the principals. How do we ensure that we bring that, that system into our classrooms? And so after we have, after we train the principals and the curriculum directors are very involved, as Dr. Burr just mentioned, in the beginning parts of that process, we then take that to our APCs. So every month, we have a curriculum training with the APCs, an elementary school that just called APs. And they are trained on those look fours and those processes to be able to take back into their building. From that point, our curriculum directors and team then train our school-based coaches. So our literacy coaches in elementary, we have a primary coach. And then most schools have an intermediate coach. In all of the secondary, we have literacy coaches. The majority of the schools now have math coaches as well as science coaches that are then trained for their content of this, of this instructional cycle of then what they are going to take back to the PLCs and how they are going to have an impact in those classrooms. Moving down, we have our leading and learning that has continued. We've spoken about that in previous years. And so every grade level, every content has a leading and learning representative. So there's over a thousand teachers that we train every quarter on that same process. So on, at this time of the year, we're focused on interventions and acceleration as well as the standards-based instruction for that quarter. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Johnston for our strategic planning.
Thank you. So from this point forward, what we're going to do is kind of take you big picture through our instructional cycle and really start from progress monitoring and what we do with that data. And then all the way down into the classroom to what teachers are doing using the instructional cycle. cycle to provide interventions in their buildings. So at this time, we're going to start with taking you through where we've been since last summer in regards to each school's strategic plan, which is like their school improvement plan, where we are now, and then where we're going to end the year. So as a school development team, we ensure that all the school goals are really aligned to the district's strategic plan, which is envisioned 2030. So once we do that, then we were, this past summer, each school principal was responsible for completing their school's strategic plan. And this begins our first cycle that you see on your screen called the Lee County's Approach to Strategic Planning. We were so excited because we were able to provide the principals and their leadership teams with these strategic plans at the beginning of last summer. So they had the whole summer to really plan and get ready for the school year, which really was one of the first times they've ever had that much time to plan. We were so ready for a fabulous year of success. When we kicked off, as Dr. Spiro mentioned earlier, with the Amazing Race and we were restarting our academic engines, we were ready to go, truly and very well planned out. So the academic strategic plans are based on the four top priorities of academic services, which are attendance, behavior, classroom success, and dropout prevention. We know you all have heard this before. The attendance part of the strategic plan focuses on the staff, teacher, and student attendance. Behavior plans included safety, well-being, and the social-emotional aspects of the students and teachers and staff. Classroom success focused on specific plans regarding the interventions of all students beginning right from the start of quarter one. We were ready to go with interventions starting in quarter one based on the data we had from the previous year in all grade levels and all content areas. And then dropout prevention is regarding minimizing retentions for students, academics, making sure our students are on grade level, keeping them on track, discipline, and parent engagement. We also, last summer, reviewed every single school's master schedule to make sure that they had an adequate core academic blocks, time for interventions, and we did all of this before school started. So much hard work was put into these plans. Each school development executive and with their curriculum and instruction director went to each school and we met and we reviewed these plans together and made sure that every school was truly ready. And then COVID hit as soon as we started school and we couldn't even imagine what quarter one was going to bring. We thought last year was hard, this year was, first quarter was truly, we were in a crisis. So we kept going despite that, we kept going and we kept going through the instructional cycle that we're going to lay out for you. And now, and what we have done this year is instead of creating a plan and putting it on the shelf and not looking at it until we get FSA scores back at the end of the year, we are bringing this plan up with the schools every quarter. And that is what the rest of the executive directors are going to share with you. So Ms. Mayor is now going to share cycle two of the strategic plan.
So we were planning to meet with them face to face, have this great rich conversation. Our students were going to be moving, we were filling in gaps, and like she said, COVID hit. So our first meeting in October with them was just looking at the data through Zoom. So we had these Zoom meetings with our principals and it was still rich. I'm not going to tell you they were not, but it was a whole different, we were supporting our schools and our students and what can we do to continue moving forward, but at the same time, taking care of everybody. And so we came in and like she said, we had the same strategic plan embedded in it, it's just a link on there that you click on and it takes them to the next step. So we kind of took our strategic plan, they'd worked everything out. It's a large document, really makes you think about what are the next steps? What do you do to really turn a school around? What do you do to get students learning? It is very well thought out plan. And then we tried to condense it and said, okay, we worked as a team, the four of us, and are you off pace? If you're off pace, how are you getting back on? So we just posed questions to them, to our principals, and they filled it in. And it wasn't lengthy, it was just, you know, what do you do? Making sure they knew where to go and to remind them, oh yeah, those curriculum briefs are out there, we could click on those and we can, we know exactly where our teachers should be teaching, we know how to get there. At the middle level, we saw, and Lori Houchen will speak in a little bit, but she saw, oh yeah, our IGs have these prereq skills and we had iReady, again, thankful for that, moneybags, iReady that could fill in these learning, these prereqs that the student needed to master that standard. So here this Mary, Mary's out for 10 days because she's got the virus, right? Her teacher's out five days when she comes back or 10 days, you know, she was out five and then, because it just kind of happens that way. So a lot of instruction and it doesn't always line up. It could be this child this week and this child this, so we've got gaps all over. So true differentiation right now is happening in our schools based on Mary's needs, Debbie's needs, Betsy's needs. What are your needs and how do we help you? So those prerequisite skills are identified so they can master that standard. So here's the prereq, I'm going to build that in, you know. Melissa, she might not need quite as much support, she might already be there and Linda needs a lot more support, so I'm going to take, do a lot more of those prereq skills. So they're built right into our instructional guides. So all of that was brought to the forefront of our, as we met with our principals and it was about what do we already have? What resources do our coaches, are they developing, building, our directors? What do we already have that is there to support you and get your students moving forward? And so that's what we talked about during that meeting and I'd be happy to share one of them with you if you'd like to see that. But all of the questions were about driving instruction, true differentiation based on the students and what they had missed and moving forward. So from that, I'm going to turn it over to Marcia.
And I'm going to talk about the cycle three strategic plan, what we did with them. We decided at cycle three, it was, they were held in late January, we were at a point where the cases in the schools were dropping and people were beginning to feel a little bit more comfortable about meeting face to face. And so we brought in the principal, we decided to do this one face to face, to just be able to have that conversation with them and to see into the body language and the, and all of the things around them, just to really get a good picture of it. So we did do them face to face. We had two rooms, one for the academics and one for the behavior and the attendance and the dropout. So they were held in two different facilities. But in order to make the principals, there was a little bit of apprehension on them, I'm coming back down here and talking about that data face to face because we hadn't done it in a little bit, in a little bit. It had taken, we had done it in alternative forms. So the executive directors decided that in order to alleviate that stress to the best of our ability, we were going to go out with them and do a pre-meeting. So each of us went out to our schools prior to the scheduled face-to-face data chat meeting and we went over several things with them. And we started off those meetings at the school by kind of looking at where they were this year in comparison to previous years. And believe it or not, there was a lot of things that we could really highlight and celebrate with them, wins that they had made from 2020, sorry, not 2020, 2019 to 2021. And also looking at the, by quarter, how they were comparing to where they were in 2019. We didn't use the 2020, you know, we had no FSA obviously at that time, so we couldn't use that data, but we were comparing by quarters to see if they were making progress and how they were doing. And that was a lot of wins for schools and they were very excited that we highlighted that positive with them first. So that kind of built them up and gave them a little bit of confidence. We also talked about their pacing, as Ms. Mayor just said, are you, how are you? Are you on pace to be able to have some time to do some review before the testing? If not, how can we help you? Do we need to get the curriculum team out here to help you develop a pacing plan? What can we do to support you in getting back on track? We talked about the exemplars, making sure that they were being given and that they were using the exemplars in the way that they were intended to be used, which is to guide in the instructional cycle. You gave, you taught, you gave the exemplar, did they master it? Did they not? And where do we go from here? Either reteach or move on. And so we talked to them about that. We talked to them about their intervention plan and the time and making sure that they were also including time for math because sometimes we focus so much on ELA that math can take a little bit of a backseat and we didn't want to do that with them, so we talked about that. And we talked about the tutoring plan that again, we should have a little money bag because that was, you know, Esther funded, how they were going to utilize that gift of money and which was important for that is that this time it was available to all schools, not just our Title I schools. So that was really important. A lot of schools never have the money to do tutoring because they don't have Title I funds. So that was exciting. We also talked to them about something that we discovered as we were having conversations is that in previous years, the number of students who came in to this school year without having a previous FSA score was very small. But this year, when we were looking at those numbers, we were finding that in some schools it was much as 25% of a grade level had no previous score. And so if you can't find a previous score, then those students are only going to account for you for proficiency. So we developed, we talked to them about going back and looking for scores, first of all, so you know about the learning gains that could be possible if they already had a score from another county in the state that hadn't migrated into our data system yet. And then for those students that there truly was no score, to really take a look at those data points and see how could you get them to proficiency? What could you do for those that are so close? What could you do extra? So that was something that we hadn't really had to talk about in the years past because there weren't that many of them, but now there truly are a lot of them. We also, our fabulous curriculum coordinators created data sheets for each of the content areas that gave the schools an easy way to look at triangulation of the data. Everything was at their fingertips. We had the exemplars, we had the iReady progress monitoring, we had the common quarterly assessments, we had prior, broken apart by prior year level, by this year, I mean, we just had it broken down at our fingertips. And so we talked them through that, which gave them all a lot of different aha's about their data and another way to strategically then take that data from those multiple points and develop a plan that they felt confident, talking to us about when they came down face to face. And now I'm going to turn it over to Clayton, who's going to talk about cycle four.
That takes us to where we are. Is my mic on? I'm not going to get a closer. My voice. I Kermit the Frog. So where are we now? So one thing that we've noticed going through this journey is, you know, you need to adapt because, you know, you can lay it down, all these plans and they look like everything's going to work great and then we find out, wow, this isn't, this isn't what we had planned. So when we started this, what we realized is that some, a lot of our principals and their staff were, you know, they weren't in a good place when it came to, you know, themselves in running the school because they were bogged down with everything that was taking place every day. So one of the things that we wanted to do was, was take what they needed to them to make sure we could get them to a place that was, you know, in good when it came to looking at the data. And I want to start off and preface this by, you know, we got to thank Dr. Kay and his team because, you know, one of the dreams that we all had when we came to the district was, this is now year three, was that we wanted to have all of the data in a place that was easy to find for our staff, for our teachers, our principals, and everybody else. And, and I will tell you that Dr. Kay and his team have done a tremendous job of getting this data that's easily accessible and he has made a commitment to go out and train all of our principals and their teams, being the leadership team and the teachers, on how to access the data and do that. So we've made tremendous gains in that area. So one of the things that we found out, it was important to go out to our schools and teach and go through the data with all of our principals and their leadership team. So when I say going through their data, elementary's going through their iReady data, they're going through their diagnostic, three and quarterly data. That's what we're doing now. Also, we're looking at the exemplars. So thankful for the exemplars because the exemplars, you know, we're not looking at, really, we shouldn't be looking at how my kids are comparing with other kids because like Ms. Gitten said, every school is different and their class may not be performing as well, but what is important when you're looking at each of the individual kids. So part of this process that we're going to be doing in quarter four or for cycle four is it's all about interventions. We're going to go take the principals through the exemplars and all their progress monitoring. We're going to meet with them and take them through the data. It's really interesting because what you can see is you can find some areas when you look at it, all the way down to the individual students in the classroom. And that's a very powerful tool. I don't know of any time in my 26 years in the district when it was easy to get data that drilled all the way down to an individual student in the classroom as quickly as we are able to do it now. That's the powerful tool. So this cycle is all about interventions. We're going to be like Marcia said, the principals have already been trained, the principal leads are going out and walking through their PLCs and we have made the commitment to make sure that we are checking on what interventions are going place in the school. And part of that, when we go visit the schools, is we want to make it one-stop shopping. So if we see that and the principal or their leadership team sees that there's areas that they need help with, we can immediately, we do it right there, we immediately sign our staff to go out and assist them in the areas that they need. And also, we're able to, you know, one of the things that we're running into is that a lot of our teachers are struggling with the art of teaching. You know, they may be new to the profession and they don't, they're struggling with lesson plans and how to set up a classroom. We're able to plan that for them as well and have them go out and get the assistance that they need. So this, this cycle is all about providing the assistance to the schools that they need to prepare them to be ready because we have the assessments upcoming.
I'm sorry, Dr. Savage, has somebody turned the heat on? Is that what that smell is?
I do smell heat. I will let Mr. Paul.
All right, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lori Houchen.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. So this slide takes us through a traditional school year pre-COVID and we just want to talk a little bit more about absences and what an issue it is. So on a typical year, we have one student absent per day in a class of 24. And teachers typically only miss 5% or less of the entire work year. So it's a pretty stable population and we're really able to mitigate absences with the systems that we have in place. When we move to the second slide, this is like during the height of our absences at first semester. We've now moved to three students absent per day in a class of 24 and staff absences have doubled. So a picture of these Xs like moving around, moving around, and a teacher in and out, in and out. It really hinders the momentum of learning. And if you think about this in a tiering system like we do for our multi-tier systems of support, a tier one, they're approaching grade level or on grade level, right? So they're receiving their core instruction. When they're absent slightly, they get a little differentiation, we move on. Tier two is a year to two years behind and we do our cores, we do our differentiation, but we start looking at targeted interventions at that point. When they get to tier three, they're two to three years behind and when they get three years behind, research says that they hardly ever have the opportunity to catch all the way up. We're at very specific targeted interventions and targeted intervention time. So I say that point to say that we are now on the two-year mark of COVID. By the time we finish the year, we'll be at two years and three months of COVID. And so there's a lot of mislearning. And so that's a lot that our team is constantly working on and that the teachers are having to navigate on a daily basis. It's a very daunting task, but we're up for the challenge and we're going to tell you how we're going to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Houchen. So more than ever, our pre-K through 12 teaching and learning cycle is expected to happen in every school with all students and it is the foundation of our PLCs. So this has become a challenge though, as you, as Ms. Houchen just painted the picture of the absences and how they move, the students and the teacher absences. But we are, we're charging forward. Plus, if you think about it, our second graders have never experienced a normal year. I believe you all have heard that before. So at the end of kindergarten where things really come together is when COVID started for a student, especially in reading. And that, in second grade, we're seeing that now when they're taking the exemplars, which are on grade level, for the most part, they're really struggling with it. And teachers are struggling on how to scaffold them back down to that maybe quarter four from their kindergarten year to give them those foundational pieces. And we're going to get into And we're going to get into how we're doing that in just a minute. Also, if you think about high school, our juniors, my daughter's a junior and she's never had a normal high school year yet. Hopefully next year, we're going to get there when she's a senior, but, you know, that's for all of our juniors in high school. They've never had a normal year. And then we get to our principals. So our first, second, and third-year principals have also never had a normal year. And so one meeting at elementary, and we have 48 to 50 in the room when we meet with just elementary, I said, if you're Year One, Two, or Three, please stand. And we had about a third of the principals stand. And then I said, if you're Year Four, please stand. It was almost half of our principals in elementary have never led in a normal year, which makes it even more critical that this teaching and learning cycle is continuously brought forward. And we have been doing that this year through all of the stakeholders that Dr. Burr and Dr. Quisenberry talked about earlier. And that's that constant communication that gets all the way to the classroom. This cycle is so imperative and is why the principal leads are going in and visiting the PLCs and why we are going in and walking through interventions because that is the instructional cycle and where it occurs. We're constantly coaching and collaborating to continuously improve this cycle so that students have multiple opportunities to continue to master the standards. So I'm going to take you through each step of the instructional cycle so you can get a picture of what happens. The first step is to plan. And so this is planning for our regular standards, you know, that's going to happen through backwards design. And then, of course, is to teach. We have to teach those standards, right? That's the next component of this cycle. And the standards, this is where the instructional guides come in and teachers can grab those high-effect strategies from those instructional guides to teach the standards well the first time. But then how do we know if the students have learned those standards or not through that initial teaching cycle? And that is when we administer and assess using the exemplars. These are short and it measures, it's like a dipstick, okay, are they mastering this standard that we just taught? Are they mastering this standard that we just taught? And then in PLCs, the teachers analyze this data. And this is what will help us to then adapt our instruction to give the students exactly what they need, all students, high-level students and low-level students. If you're a Level Five and a Level Four, we can guarantee you that you're probably not getting hundreds on the exemplars either. And so it will help, we are filling holes for all students, no matter what level. And then we adapt. So we reteach based on the results of those exemplars during small groups or interventions. And this is where questions Three and Four of the PLC process come into place. What do we do if they learned it and what do we do if they did not learn it? And then we reassess in a variety of ways, not necessarily a test. It could be, show me your whiteboard in the middle of instruction. We don't want to add a lot more testing, but multiple ways to take a formative assessment after the intervention is given. And then we reflect. So finally, we need to know if the intervention worked and did the students retain the mastery of those standards over time? And that is where the quarterly comprehensive assessments come in, in our eye-ready and STAR progress monitoring. This year, one of the pieces that we took off the teachers' plates and made optional was the quarterly comprehensive because we just needed more instructional time. However, for the most part, they're still giving it because they really value what the data that is bringing. And then the learning cycle is completed several times throughout each quarter in between each progress monitoring of STAR and eye-ready. But the largest enemy of completing this cycle for students is time. Because you can imagine, because of the extensive learning loss we have, teachers are having to go through this cycle multiple times, multiple times, until students master the standards. So we have partnered with the schools to creatively add time to their day, whether it's through planning, breakfast clubs, after-school tutoring, in-school tutoring. Some of our schools are doing Saturday tutoring for students who have not yet mastered the standards. And so that is what our curriculum directors of curriculum instruction are going to go through next in a more detailed way to show you the systems that we are using to maximize learning time for students. And this is where you're going to really see a lot of money bags. And then from that, the curriculum directors are going to share specifically, what do these interventions look like using this instructional cycle in the classroom? What do those look like at each grade level and content area?
So before we move forward, I'm sorry, time is our enemy as well.
I have to leave and I feel like I'm being really rude because I really value everything that you've done. I promise that I will give my questions to Dr. S. I just don't want to be rude and leave, but I've got a family commitment, I've got to go.
We understand.
So don't take that as lack of support for you. And oh my gosh, Mr. Kay, you blew my mind. Like you totally hit it out of the park. So I'm really sorry. I'm going to stay for six more minutes, but I just wanted to tell you I'm really sorry.
You were going to say something about time.
Yes, Ms. McClung was going to say that I'm going to ask people to speed talk because, you know, there's so much to share. And you've gotten some very detailed details about the work that's going on in the schools. So we still have a good 30 minutes. So I'm just letting you know, Ben, at least.
All right, well, that was actually for our team. So our team, take heed of those notes. So Ms. McClung, we will not go into great detail. I did tell you we're excited about sharing today, so we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to share with you, so.
It's all good, too.
Just letting you know, to be prepared, it's great information, you're going to enjoy it. I just wanted to let you know we are going to run late. Thank you.
All right. So as we take on, and Bethany, Lori, and I will actually be able to move very quickly through some of these because the executive directors of school development have done such an outstanding job of talking about some of these items. But we really want to bring it back to pre-K systems. So as you got to hear Ms. Romo speak earlier when we started, those two students that you see on your screen right there, those are pre-K students. They are the class of 2035. So just putting that into perspective when we're talking about our systems, who is really impacting. So what Bethany, Lori, and I are going to do really quickly is talk about four big bucket pieces of when we're targeting our systems and maximizing instruction, what does that really mean for us? And that first part is all about standards-based instruction and it's pieces that you've heard us talk about before. But this year, more than ever, we have reset the stage what feels like every three weeks. So as we ask teachers to take a dipstick on their students every three weeks, every three weeks, we are realigning our systems because we have a new curveball thrown at us. But really here, that big piece to take a look at is the targeted curriculum to address gaps. You heard Dr. Kay talk about the increase of Level One students in which we've onboarded. So it's important that in our instructional guides, we have scaffolded activities to help provide gaps to those instructional pieces. So each of the areas, K-12 has put in those prerequisite skills of what do our students need? Because even our Level Fours and Fives, as you heard the executive directors talk about, they too have gaps inside their learning. We've expanded our leading and learning teams that you heard Dr. Quisenberry talk about earlier. And even those teams, the teachers bring to us, where are their pinpoints? So a lot of times previously, when we sat and talked to you, it was about what we were providing teachers. Those conversations are very, very much still a two-way street right now of what are your needs from us? What else can be provided to help address the areas of opportunities for our students?
And then next, we're going to look at our data-driven systems. So I'm going to go left and right. So we have a data management warehouse and Dr. Kay's team helps us get all of our assessments into Performance Matters. And then from there, we all, three levels, have a district website for administrators. And so with just a click, we update these every week. They're able to see the same data set that we're seeing. So it has our progress monitoring data and exemplar data. And then the principal has their own data with the same assessments. And then the teacher, they shove that link out to the teacher and the teacher has their own data that they can drill down to the students. So it's able, it allows us to have very consistent data points to have conversations about and to move the needle. Also, as you've heard a lot about, the exemplars and the quarterly comprehensive, so I'm not going to belabor that. And then we have our progress monitoring, K-8 is eye-ready. And then at the high school level, they use STAR. And we use all of this to have great conversations and a PLC structure to continuously move the gap with our students.
So moving into our instructional technology resources, as you can see, data management systems are still there, as Lori talked about. We have admin curriculum websites, but then we have also built teacher curriculum websites. And so for each content, there is a teacher website that they are able to go to for a click, a quick click to get their data. So all of those Performance Matter links are created for them and they're able to go in and dig down to their students. One of the things that we were able to purchase this year for elementary was Reflex Math. As you saw, math has had some significant learning losses across the state and the country, and it starts in our primary and our intermediate students as far as basic number sense and fluency. And so Reflex Math is a quick automaticity program that students utilize for 10 minutes a day outside of their math block, and they also have access to at home. We also have the Alex program, which we've spoken to you about before, and that is a learning path for algebra and geometry students. And then Imagine Learning is also a program that I believe we've spoken about before, but that is our program that we utilize for our LY students that have a due date of January 1st, 2020, or newer, meaning they're later, later in the year, like closer to now, that so they're newer to the country. And so that is the system, the program that they go into rather than going into eye-ready because it focuses and meets their needs better for their language acquisition. And then we also have Edge Annuity, which is utilized in high school for reading recovery, credit recovery in reading, and then middle school utilizes it for reading remediation as well. And then as, I believe it was Dr. Burr that spoke about our expanded learning opportunities. So one way that we're able to expand learning is not just during the school day, but also having programs that are available at home for our students. So eye-ready has the learning path that you're familiar with, and then also the teacher toolbox that teachers are able to utilize to pull very specific lessons to be able to utilize with the students in school or to be able to send home as additional practice. We also have already spoken about Connect with Lee. Our daytime numbers for this school year so far is 310 students. And then our evening, we have been able to reach 2,984 students to help with anything that they need. So that's been a great program for our families. We also, as I believe Dr. Burr referred to, for our before and after-school tutoring, we have been blessed with money for elementary tutoring and currently have over 5,000 students that have expanded learning opportunities. We have one specific school, Sunshine Elementary, that has over 500 students that are participating in the program. And then additional schools such as Calusa Elementary or the Island School that normally wouldn't have that opportunity to be able to offer to their students that have thriving programs as well. So there's your money bags. We talked about that there would be places that we would see dollar signs representing that they were purchased through Essar. So if it is bold or has the money symbol, that means that that was a program or a support that we were able to purchase through Essar Funding. Okay, so we've talked a lot about some of our learning opportunities. And in elementary, as Dr. Johnston spoke to with second grade, one of the major places that we have seen learning loss is with phonics. So those second-grade students should have been for fourth quarter of kindergarten, that's where you really begin to build on those foundational skills. That's where your phonics starts moving into practice and you begin to apply. And so I'm going to go through some of the ways that we are addressing that need and we are trying to ensure that we kind of break those opportunities. So first, we started with the Young Five program. So we were extremely excited, I personally was extremely excited, to be able to begin the Young Five program this school year. So the Young Five program is in eight of our elementary schools and currently services 115 of our students. Next school year, we will expand to 10 elementary schools and hopefully will continue to expand. And it's a parent-choice program for our youngest students. If their birthday falls between May 1st and September 1st, parents have the opportunity to go into this transitional kindergarten classroom that gives them more time, both academically and developmentally. And so that's given us an opportunity to really build those foundational skills. As I talked about phonics, our core phonics program for elementary in K-2 is Really Great Reading. And this sounds like common sense, but it is something that we are proud of in the last two, I believe two, maybe three years, that we've been able to implement in every one of our elementary schools. It's not common in districts to have a common phonics program to be able to help our students. And so currently, our second-grade students on their last eye-ready, their mid-year eye-ready, 56% of our second-grade students are performing at a kindergarten level in phonics. That's a really big deal. Because when they move into third grade, you move from learning to read to reading to learn. And so we are really working to put in different pieces of intervention, not just K-2, but also 3 to 5, as we're seeing some of that learning loss in phonics in those grade levels as well. So Really Great Reading is the core that we are pushing out, additional professional development and support for our K-2, but then we also utilize it for intervention in 3 to 5. We've also, through Essar, been able to purchase additional, an additional program for moving phonics to fluency. So as I said, you need phonics, you know, to be able to read, correct? But what we're seeing, especially in our first and second-grade students, is that application. Some of them know their phonics, but they're still unable to read. So we were able to use that funding to provide controlled text, which means that the students are only exposed to words that they have learned, that the phonics and also the high-frequency words forbid them to be able to have additional practice in class as well as at home, and then additional leveled readers for them to see success in applying their reading. We've also purchased a Phonics for Reading program for 3 to 5, which is implemented in that tutoring program that I was speaking about. The Phonics for Reading program is an accelerated program that's in a six-week interval to be able to move the students quickly through their phonics holes. And then we also have for our students Just In Time that we push out for, okay, I have my phonics and I'm able to read, however, I am weak in vocabulary and comprehension. So then how do I continue to move through that structure? And so Just In Time is daily activities for the teachers to be able to use that, address that need with their students through intervention. Math is, looks very different than ELA does in their structure, meaning that our response, our general approach to intervention in math is through daily review of previously learned or previously taught standards. And so the Take 10 tasks are provided as a sample routine for kicking off the math block with a spiral of previous learning and whole-class classroom discussion, excuse me. The resource also embeds test-taking strategies. I know you guys are all with me, where when you see a word problem, you're like, why do they give you all that stuff? Just tell me what you want me to answer. And so it trains the students, for we call it Take Out the Trash, and it teaches them for how to isolate what is needed for that problem and for that standard. We also provide, we already talked about Reflex. So we also provide achievement level descriptive test, task banks, which means that they take the standard and then they're able to provide lessons for the students at that scale of the standard. So if a student is a Level Two on the standard, it provides activities to do with that student at that level. If they're at a Level Five and they need extension, we also provide activities to be able to support those students. And then they also have a Just In Time and a Filling the Gaps for Math with that same process. So this slide is a little scary, and we've talked about pacing earlier in the presentation, but we currently have 32 instructional days until our state test. And we have found that especially in math and science, that our classrooms are struggling and they're behind pace. So what we have done as a curriculum team is we've began to create alternative, go ahead, we began to create alternative pacing schedules. So our teams in secondary as well and elementary have been pushing out to those schools and those PLC teams to create an alternative plan because with math, your standards run all the way up to the day. And so if you're behind a week, two weeks, a month... And so if you're behind a week, two weeks, a month, those students will not have been taught on those standards. And so we want to make sure that our students have been exposed to and taught all of the standards and then have the ability to provide interventions for the ones that were not mastered. So this is a, an example of a fourth grade, a fourth grade P L C that we supported and created an alternative plan where they utilize their intervention time to teach a second math block, and then utilize a different time of the day to be able to pull in for intervention. And then next, we are going to have the opportunity to hear from one of our amazing elementary principals, Jody Pelakis, and she's going to talk about the reality of learning from a school leader's perspective.
From River Hall Elementary, I'd ask to spend a few minutes talking to you about some of the challenges as a school that we faced this year, and some of the things that we've done to offset that and be sure that we keep focused on our students and keep us as a school moving forward. I will say the challenges of COVID are very different than anything I've dealt with professionally in the past. And that's a powerful statement coming from someone who went through Hurricane Charlie. I lost my classroom, my whole school was lost to Charlie, and I was also in the classroom for 9/11. And I will say that I think the most significant difference between those moments in history are that through the process of recovery and rebuilding, we were very united as a school community, with our families, with each other, with the community at large. We came out stronger and more successful after those experiences. I would say unfortunately, that's not been my experience right now with COVID. So some of our challenges really are maintaining relationships, keeping up the trust, keeping up communication so that we can continue to work with our families and communities as partners to give our kids what they need. Some of our biggest challenges are lost time. Our students that were not here on campus at all last year as kindergartners find themselves starting the school year this year as first graders, not knowing how to come to the carpet, not knowing how to work with manipulatives or turn and talk, or some of those pagan structures that they would be very comfortable with if they had been here as kindergartners. That results in academic frustration and social emotional challenges that typically kids would not have, because they learned all of those social skills as kindergartners and first graders. So that's a challenge that we're working with some school-wide pieces, but also significant amounts of time being spent in classrooms, working in small group to close those social emotional gaps too, that I think is really important. We have had to look differently at classroom coverage and what that means for our students when, on a typical day in October or November, we had as many as 20 to 25 staff members out every day for weeks at a time. When there aren't enough hands to go around, intervention groups are cut. And I have to really think as we start that morning shuffle, about 5:30 in the morning, as I pull these folks to cover classroom responsibilities, which intervention group was going to be missed today, which classrooms are going to go without a paraprofessional again today. What pieces will have to come off the leadership plate of our leadership team is we cover classrooms, and we teach, and we cover the front desk, and we cover the clinic, and then we're cleaning classrooms after school. And so just balancing all of that to get our schools covered during the day has been a huge challenge. Super happy to celebrate those gains, because our school is, is stronger and in a much better place academically than we were at the end of last year. So those pieces are really strong. I would say that we have increased our flexibility of our systems themselves. We're constantly communicating, tempering our sense of urgency with grace and compassion, because we're all going through this at different times and in different ways. But yeah, we are all very much going through this, and we need to keep our focus on our students. So I would say that the biggest changes to what we've done system-wide here at school is really to focus on what we can absolutely control, continuously start our P L C conversations and every conversation that we have with why. Why are we doing this? Why is this necessary? If it doesn't directly tie back to improving our student learning outcomes, then frankly, it's coming off the plate. If it's something that's not critical to getting us through the day, and it's not going to directly impact learning, then we're taking it off the plate and finding a different way to bring that in at a different time. I think it's also been critically important to empower every staff member, every staff member, from classroom teachers to the leadership team, to our custodians and front office staff, our parent pros, cafeteria, everybody, to make the decisions that directly impact them and their team around them. Work at the speed of trust. We trust you to make those decisions. Tie it back to your wife, it's good for kids, we're moving forward. We're not going to spend a lot of time navigating that conversation or questioning the conversation. Along with that, it really is reminding everybody to focus on less to achieve more. So we've done a lot of prioritizing for our improvement plans. Our day-to-day operations have significantly changed, beefing up our core instruction so that we don't have to spend so much time upside down in intervention. That's been a really strong focus for us this school year, and really just establishing and maintaining those super high levels of expectations and providing equally high levels of support. So I think those are all things we've been super successful with here at River Hall. Be happy to talk with you more about that anytime. Come have a chat, we'll pour a cup of coffee, and we'll talk. Have a good day.
At the middle school level, you're going to see a lot of similarities, and you'll hear at the high school level too. So all year long, we've done drill-down activities, because there has been a lot of learning loss, a lot of students in and out. So we provide lessons, we provide like little checks for them, we provide remediation paths. So you're seeing that across all of our cores. One thing we are doing differently for Level Ones is we're focusing on our drill-down on language and editing. That's 10 raw score points on the F S A E L A, but it also will help them with their writing, and it is part of decoding. So we're really targeting that for, for the Level Ones. For our Levels Two and Three, we really needed to reengage the students. They were using i Ready as their reading program, and frankly, they were just tired of being on the computer day after day. So our team, we built a novel study, and we integrated that novel study with informational text. And so it kind of like helps them have that background knowledge to be able to understand what's happening with the characters. We put that in Safari, we're studying the data very closely. We also built a checkpoint test that's F S A-like midway through, and we'll do it at the end. And we have so far, as of February 15th, we have 185,000 students and teachers using those resources, and we're getting lots of reports that the students are very engaged in it. So that is very promising, because we want our students to want to come to school, so they're enjoying that. And then for our Levels Four and Five, Ms. Vaughn, you'll be happy. We also saw that a traditional reading program just wasn't good for our Levels Four and Five. So all of our schools became a Cambridge School, and, but we're all just using only, because that's what we've had our training with, the Global Perspectives course. And that teaches them a lot of research and analysis. The schools had a choice this year, it was our pilot, that they could put all their fours and fives in there, or they could just start with their eighth grade. Most of the schools decided to put all their fours and fives in there. And what we found that the, that we have, Matt and Frank, they pulled the numbers for us, and so at semester, we had a statistical significance that shows that the student, the Level Fours that are in Global Perspectives are far outperforming the fours that were not put in Global Perspectives. So we're continuing to watch that data. So that is like our E L A reading kind of response, and those two teams are remarkable, and they are constantly building supports for students. And our math, you've already heard a lot about the prerequisite skills. We have been training on that for some time, we weren't getting any traction. We really wanted the teachers to understand that there's a lot of mislearning, there's a lot of unknowns. And so why not by front-loading and pushing out the prereqs? This is what they would need to know to be successful for the new learning? Why wouldn't we do that? For some, it'll be a review, for some, it'll be new learning, but there's going to be less backend remediation. And so we finally, the teams just moved them right into the instructional guys up front and center before a learning activity, and we're starting to see a lot more traction on that as well. We also wanted to increase our Level Threes in Algebra this year, and so we needed to balance our progression. So we worked at the time, before Dr. Kay stole him, we had Frank Savage in our department, and he balanced our progression. And so before, kids were skipping a grade level to get to Algebra, and now we have a blended seventh, eighth. And the data on the seventh, eighth looks so good, those kids are really doing well. And so that was a good move on his part, very smart. And our Level Threes in Algebra, we, there was a lot of trepidation about, especially from our high-performing schools, believe it or not, about putting the Level Threes in Algebra. Last year, we only had 47.4% of our Level Threes in Algebra. This year, we have 87.3% of our Level Threes in Algebra. And at semester, I'm proud to say, because those teachers are working hard and those supports were really spot-on, that most schools, almost all of the schools, have already met or exceeded the proficiency rate of the end-of-the-year E O C in Algebra at semester, with double the number of students. So that is, in a nutshell, middle school. Dr. Gibson with Rams is coming on.
In the fall school year of 2020, 2021, Lee Hayek's Middle School was offered the opportunity to extend the school day by 30 minutes. Immediately seeing the benefits of additional time with our scholars, we worked with Talc and Spout to meet the requirements to allow for change in schedules. The added time has afforded us the ability to maximize instructional time in core classes, allowing for diversified strategies and structures, while still meeting the individual learning needs within the i Ready progress monitoring tool. We have structured our day to begin with a 30-minute homeroom, during which students work on individual learning paths within i Ready. This personalized instruction addresses any learning gap so that students are able to make gains leading to self-sufficiency and success. Additionally, Wellness Wednesdays has been moved and expanded to every mindful Monday every 30 minutes. At this time, we implemented a research-based S C L curriculum to all gruins each Monday, which has been instrumental in mitigating some of the emerging behaviors stemming from the pandemic, isolations, and quarantines. The homeroom period roster has been strategically built according to testing room guidelines. It has been noted in the past experiences and research supports that students are better equipped emotionally and academically to give their best effort in environments that are familiar to them. By creating homerooms, they will be testing rooms for progress monitoring, high-stake testing, and the outset of the year. We are leveraging the added 30 minutes to the best advantage of our students, school and community. When we began the homeroom concept, we saw immediate gains as a school. We were able to maintain our school grade in the face of daunting global circumstances. We hope to continue to reap the benefits of this opportunity as we move forward. Thank you.
And their data is looking really well, and we're very happy that they took advantage of that. And under Dr. Gibson's direction, it's a tight system. I'm now going to turn it over to Candace Alaveta, and she's going to speak to high school.
So a lot of the systems you're hearing, we try to implement those on K-12. That way, as we're moving forward, we're talking systems all the time. But what does that actually look like and what does it mean? So one of the pieces you're seeing here in response to our high school E L A data is really drill downs. So Dr. Kay spent a lot of time with us today, talking about how do we pinpoint what individual students need? Because not every student needs the same exact piece. So our E L A team has created drill downs based upon those specific standards. The piece of it is, though, teachers are able to take this and give students the activities that meet their needs. So Lori may have one activity, Bethany has something different, and I have something completely different, all while still maintaining that 84 minutes that we have. So it really provides them the opportunity to drill down to the students. Those teams, as you heard Ms. Mayer talk about earlier, put together sheets that teachers are able to not have to go in and disaggregate the data and find out what is it that Candace needs. Instead, it's done for them. So they're able to react to it. We've heard a lot about what does this year look like? Ms. Pelakis talked about taking things off the plate. So as teams, we're trying to see what is it we can consistently take off plates for them, knowing that the teachers, it's all about them in front of their students. In addition, we've got Just In Time supports. Now Just In Time supports, Ms. McClung, if you'd click for me, this is a spiral. So this can be utilized with all students, and you've heard both Bethany and Lori talk about this piece. And it's very specific that there's teacher direct instruction, but then student activities, because we all know it's about the application of it. And what does that timeframe look like? Dr. Quisenberry mentioned when she started in the math, 32 instructional days. That gives my heart palpitations as I think about high school that has 16 blocks of instruction. And today's already over. So depending upon who you saw today, you may only see your E L A teacher 15 more times before you're going to sit and take that reading assessment. So these pieces are key when we're talking about what are we providing our teachers to help close those gaps, knowing all students, Levels One through Five, have some form of gap. One of the things we've done very differently, though, this year in high school, just in January, a response to our E L A data, is we needed to go outside of that E L A classroom. And Ms. McClung, if you would go ahead and click forward, and you can do all four clicks at one time, is we've really targeted our world history classrooms. So if we think about the classes students are taking in their high school progression and what classes tie together, we realized we could put more resources into our world history classrooms and really work with those P L Cs. A lot of times, we spend the time with our 11th grade U S History, because it's an E O C course. But we don't spend as much time with world history, and our world history teachers have the option, the opportunity to be able to help with all of the text features and literacy that the Grade 10 students have to take on their F S A. So just starting in January, we've pushed out new supports, and our team is working with those P L Cs to say, hey, how do we answer stimulus-based question? What does that look like? How are we writing across the content areas? So students are practicing these strategies, not in isolated E L A classrooms, but they're really seeing it in multiple core areas. Now, in terms of mathematics, just like you heard Dr. Quisenberry speak earlier, we see large gaps inside of math, because those are very skill-based pieces there. So very similar is our pacing right now at the high school. You would be hard-pressed to find any two high schools on the same pacing, let alone two classrooms within the same building. So one of the pieces that we have spent the time doing after those winter data chats is going to each high school and working with their algebra and geometry teams and saying, where are you? And let's really focus in on what students need. So on the screen, that's a sample calendar. We deviated away from our traditional scope and sequence, and we restructured the calendar for the remainder of the year. But the piece of it is our leading and learning team said, Candace, this is great. Math team, this is great. How do we personalize it? So when we talk about leading and learning being a two-way street, what you can't really see there, but Ms. McClung, if you click one more time, there's a place in the upper left-hand corner that says personalize. So each high school has their own individualized calendar. And that allows our team of math, Ms. Megan and Ms. Joanna, to go out when they're with their schools to say, okay, here's your calendar that we built together, where are you? So we're consistently and continuously adapting and reacting to what the realities are of their classes. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Simmons, who's going to talk a little bit about what are our systems when we're looking at on-time graduation.
So we've heard all the way from K to 12, and now we're going to talk about the culminating activity, which, which is graduation. That's the ultimate goal for all of us, to get the kids, you know, across that stage. So what are we doing? First of all, ka-ching, we got the money bags, the college and career specialists. Thank you to, thank you to Esser. We're going to watch a short video that's going to show you specifically about the college and career specialists. One of the important things this year, individualized student and parent meetings with, and guardian meetings. Counselors are meeting with the students and their parents to make sure that all of our kids are on track to graduate. That was a test that started at the beginning of the year, and it's continuing to make sure that we have the open communications with our families. 11th and grade, 12th grade support for Edge Annuity. I'm proud to say, or happy to say, 11th and 12th grade support for Edge Annuity. I'm proud to say, or happy to say, that Edge Annuity is partnering with us. And after spring break, all of our students are going to have access to certified online coaches for live chats, and that will be for seven days a week, including Saturdays and Sundays, they will have access to that. We've added math tutoring for our PERT, because the state has given us PERT as an option this year again. And we have after-hours tutoring to prepare our students for the PERT. And then back on track, I'll give you the numbers. Back on track, we were able to retrieve 1,235 courses by the end of February. That's 1,235 credits earned by our high school seniors and juniors. And we're able to do that in the evenings. Some of our schools are offering it on the weekends as well. Mentoring homeroom, that's where we're also piloting a mentoring homeroom. It's one day a week for 30 minutes, where the students are assigned, each teacher in the building has students assigned to them. They check in, and they make sure that they're on track. It's someone to keep them on track with their, just a contact person in the building to make sure they're where they need to go. And this is for all students in the building, keeping track of grades, making sure they have the progress. And whatever they need, that teacher provides for them as an extra level of support. I do want to say that we don't just focus on juniors and seniors. It's more important to focus on the ninth graders. So we actually, this year, had a huge push. Now, granted, all things started wonderfully, and then that push kind of got blown up in our face. But the focus was after first quarter with ninth graders, that we were not waiting until semester and putting interventions in place for the ninth graders early. That way, we could catch them before they lost credit. And that will be the big push, hopefully, all things going well next year, to continue with the ninth grade. At this time, we're going to watch a video from Ms. Robery and Carolyn Hutto, the college and career specialist at East, specifically about what the college and career specialist
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Savage. As the very proud principal of Eastleigh County High School, thank you for allowing us to share some of the amazing work happening at our school. The addition of the college and career specialist position at our high schools this year has provided us the opportunity to have a designated staff member available on a daily basis to support our families and students in their efforts to prepare for life after high school. It is my pleasure to introduce the amazing college and career specialist at Eastleigh County High School, Ms. Carolyn Hutto.
Hi there. I'm Carolyn Hutto, Eastleigh County High School's college and career specialist. As the Eastleigh County High School college and career specialist, my main objective is supporting students on their journey towards life after high school. This support comes in many different forms. For instance, finding a career path takes time and self-awareness. Understanding the pathway to each career choice, knowing how to navigate processes to get there, and having the resources to reach career goals can feel like a treacherous journey. The college and career specialist will provide an invaluable resource for students and their families to help reach their career goals, which will in turn benefit the community. When I meet with a student, I begin with a question, do you have a career in mind? Depending on the answer will determine the next step. I teach them how to use career exploration tools like MyCareerShines and Onet, and how to find the education requirements for the career options they've chosen. Depending on the grade level will determine the next, the direction the conversation will go. We may discuss academic progress as it relates to career fields, school involvement, extracurricular activities, volunteer hours, and how to build personal resume to be the best candidate for their post-secondary institution and/or scholarships. But this is where I really get to know the student and plant the seed.
From day one of meeting Mrs. Hutto, my career specialist, I was able to understand the importance of her job. She filled me in on important things such as scholarships, college applications, and FASFA. Not only did she inform me of the opportunities, but she sat with me one-on-one, making sure I was filling the applications, scholarships, et cetera. She made an enormous impact on my future as a senior. I only wish I had the opportunity to meet her as a freshman. Most of the things I learned this year would have been a mystery to me if I hadn't talked to Mrs. Hutto. I am very grateful for her patience and diligence in her job to help me get to the future I want to live.
After using the career exploration tools, the student will have a list of career pathways that will outline the education requirements, and the next step is to find the institutions and then apply. Now, you might wonder, how do I serve over 400-plus seniors in the college application process, along with 1,400 underclassmen? This is where the teach-a-mana fish philosophy comes in. Each time I help a student with career selection or a college application, I create a how-to video, send an email reminder, or create a post in a class of Google Classroom relative to the topic. This way, when a student requests my assistance, I will give them guidance and sometimes homework to complete before we meet. This homework allows our meeting time to be more productive and give the student an opportunity to learn through inquiry-based learning. In addition to the application process, I've reached out to our local community partners such as FGCU and FSW as a resource to providing information and opportunities to our students. As the college and career specialist, I have organized special events, such as the FSW information sessions and two instant decision days thus far, with another FSW information session scheduled for next week during our college and career week. Between just these FSW events, there have been over 120 seniors that have taken the first step of applying to a post-secondary institution. The instant decision days are priceless. The excitement of our students being accepted when they didn't even think of college as an option really lit a fire inside of them. And to support our CTE academies, I have scheduled and organized FMTC admissions information presentations within the CTE classrooms. I've organized field trips to FMTC and have FMTC application assistance planned in place for seniors applying to Fort Myers Technical College on Monday, March 7.
Thank you very much, Cindy. And thank you, Ms. Hutto and Ms. Robery. And so at this point, before we turn it over to our last part, you've heard Dr. Kay talk to us a little bit about the progress monitoring data, Shannon team talking about the instructional cycle with our leadership teams, and all the way down to the teaching and learning. Talked about the strategic planning that took place through the course of the summer and through each of those cycles. We've talked about maximizing time through our teaching and learning. And then our curriculum directors share with you the interventions that are all in place. And so to bring it home with our last part, we have Terry Kennedy and Lita Dietz, and they're going to talk to us just a little bit about then, how's the budget supporting this as well? And then we'll take questions for anything we can answer now, and certainly Dr. Savage, because I know at time, we're also willing to follow up and writing for Friday as well, sir. Terry?
So we just wanted to follow up with Esser and how Esser funding was used for all of these initiatives that were talked about today. And Esser, as a reminder, the elementary and secondary emergency relief funding, we have Esser 1, 2, and 3. And this is the timeline that we've shown you multiple times. Just want to remind you on Esser 1, we have, if you look at the timeline there, we have finished out Esser 1, and we're doing the reporting on Esser 1. And you can look all the way over to Esser 3, as far as when it ends in 2024. All three of these funding opportunities have the same or very similar assurances, and they all tie to having to respond, prepare, or prevent COVID-19. So what we're going to do now is have, I'm going to turn it over to Lita, because she's going to give you the particulars related, specific to Esser. But I do want to point out that with the, we were counting in the back on the cha-chings and thought about actually having a little bell for you, because there were multiple times that things were mentioned that didn't necessarily have a dollar sign there, such as when Dr. Gibson talked about his extended day and the last principal talking about the college and career. So there's lots of other opportunities throughout, but she's going to give you some more detail to that. Lita Dietz?
So thank you, Mrs. Kennedy, and good afternoon. I counted 22 initiatives that were throughout our presentation this afternoon that are funded by Esser. So on this slide, this is kind of like the timeline that Mrs. Kennedy showed you, but just easier to read. Esser 1, as you see, we are coming to a close. That was a little over the, a little more than $21.8 million. We have expended 100% of Esser 1, and the majority of that money was spent on immediate reaction to COVID-19, including PPE and things that we needed to address right away in regards to COVID. In regards to Esser 2, it came to us in four specific allocations, as you see up there. Those allowed for specific allowabilities, non-enrollment, for example, was designated to go out and locate any students that got lost in the pandemic, and we were able to get them back into school with the help of funding for social workers and things like that. At this point, we have expended 20% of Esser 2. And in a minute, I'm going to explain to you some mitigating factors of why we have not expended more of that at this time. So as just a reminder, you heard earlier, the Esser funds were for tiered supports in those schools who needed extra support directly related to COVID and what they needed to help be successful throughout this process. The state is monitoring all the ways that we are spending this money, and so we are taking precautions specific to our charter schools and all of that, and how we are spending those funds so that we can prove to the state that we are using them within the allowabilities. We are also working on putting a team together to start to look at return on investment, to make sure that we are spending the funds in the most sustainable and fiscally responsible way. In regards to Esser 3, we have not yet received state approval. So the $189 million, we are still waiting to hear from the state back on that. We did submit that plan in December. So discussing some mitigating factors of why we have only drawn down 20% of Esser 2, with Esser 1, we had to provide equitable services to our private schools, meaning that we had to make sure that they knew exactly how to spend their money as well. Thankfully, the state does not make us provide that anymore. They're dealing directly with our private schools. However, we are still providing a proportionate share to our charter schools. And as I've discussed with you before, we are making sure that our charter schools are spending their Esser dollars in a smart way and an allowable way that is within the guidelines of the grant. The state and legislative approval of Esser has been rather timely. As an example, I submitted our First Amendment December 17, and that was to cover the cost of the $1,000 bonus that went out to our staff members in December, as well as our increased health insurance costs related to COVID. And I have received no information back on that since December 17 at this time. Also, as you may know, we've had some local collective bargaining hiccups, where we have to work through that process to come to an agreement of how we are going to support our bargaining committees, as well as our staff and working with the district. And lastly, just like us, the DOE is experiencing staffing shortages as well. They've had a high turnover in some of the people that are in charge, and so they are dealing with some of that as well. I did want to follow up with the board and the community in regards to our public input that we asked feedback in December for. Out of the 1,900 responses that we received, 67% of those responses were from our parents, 23% of those responses were from our staff. And I would like to positively share for everyone that what our community members wanted were the very same things that the district in our strategic plan has aligned. So for example, the top three areas of importance of spending Esser money was directly related to supporting school leaders and school needs, any activities allowable under any other federal grant money, and addressing the needs of our highly vulnerable populations. Our community thought the three best ways to address learning loss were through tutoring, comprehensive after-school programs, and summer learning, all of which dollars have been allocated for and we will spend to support those initiatives. And lastly, some of the open-ended responses that we received was that our community wants to see more staff bonuses, additional pay for our employees, addressing learning loss, addressing mental health issues that may have been related to COVID, and transportation. I would like to point out that the Esser 3 website is still available for feedback. So if anyone in our community or staff feels like there's something that they would like to share with the team, that is still available. And to wrap up and conclude today's presentation and directly relate that to Esser, here are some of the Esser-funded projects that you heard about today with a specific dollar amount in relation to those projects. I would like to point out, too, that the state has given us information that we will be receiving more smaller sub-awards under Esser 2 as well. We have already received dual enrollment with Rita's team. We are working with Dr. Quisenberry and her team with the K-2 tutoring. We have received some funds in regards to civics and the new benchmarks in relation to that. We know that 5% is going to come to us, which will be based on interventions. We will be receiving 1% that is related to summer enrichment and some money that will be allocated to after-school activities. Summer learning and summer school, more information will be coming forward about that. So thank you for your time this afternoon.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do want to recognize, I know that was a lot, and I apologize for us going over over time. But we thought, we did think it was important for you to see how the big picture, all the way down to where we are with interventions today, and then the financial support of that. So again, anything that you want to answer now, we're happy to. Anything that you would like for us to follow up for Friday's memorandum, we're happy to do that as well.
So would you rather us, like, send, I mean, I know I have a lot of questions too, so I can send them all to you?
Whatever the will is of the board, we're happy, our teams here, or follow-up and writing, whatever you choose.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
I just had a very quick college and career specialist. Is that a grant that's only at Eastleigh County High School?
No, ma'am. It's at all 15 high schools.
It's at all? Is that new this year?
Yes, that is new Esser for this year, correct.
Okay. And what kind of background would that person, would it be a counseling certification? Or how?
Well, there was, there was, sorry, this is my voice. That was done through HR. They had to come up with a job description for that. So they did. And then, I know that Lori Brooks works personally with all of them to create the curriculum. But yeah, there is a job description for that that was created.
Okay. I can look that up, because what struck me is, I think we used to have, for those of you who've been around, many years ago, because I know when I was at Estera High School, we had a college and career specialist, and I was led to believe that it was kind of a grandfathered position in that school, and it didn't really exist. And it was so long ago that I remember her office had probably hundreds of college catalogs. Remember those? So yeah, I think it's a great position. From what she described, it's what we need, and it takes something else off the plate of the counselors that can't stay up on all the most recent information, like somebody who specializes in that. So yeah, I have a grandson who's a freshman, and I'm going to make sure he's gone in. No, he needs it, believe me. But it's good to know. I think it's a great.
Yes, we used to have college and, we used to have career specialists many moons ago. And we'll make sure, what we'll do is we'll get the job description, most current one, and I'll add that in the weekly, just so you can see what the job description says. But the idea certainly is not every student's going to the world of college. And we need to make sure that we provide open doors up for all students, no matter what pathway they're going. And so we needed some guidance on helping kids. If I want to go to the world of work, what does that look like? What's my pathway to get there? And help them open that door as well.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
I was thinking the same thing, too, Ms. Vaughn. Yes, Ms. Kittens, I didn't, I knew you were here. Hello, Ms. Kittens.
Oh, I've been on the whole time.
I didn't know.
I'm sorry. I have to.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, I have to say that I was at River Hall this week, last week, and I happened to be able to sit in for a few minutes on one of their PLCs. A group of second-grade teachers that back in the fall lost two of the team teachers, and they are all just slack and just shit. And this is through their, to get, things about their class phenomenon. Just wanted to give a shout out to them. I was going to mention that at the time. They're really doing great things, and I'm sure at other schools they are as well. Thank you so much for the information. And my main thing is thank you for simplicity. And thank you all. And if we have questions, I'll send it later.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, did you have some?
I was just going to say, I feel like you've pulled back a curtain, and that I really understand more now what you've been doing. And I think the challenge is going to be getting it to the kids. And I think the challenge is going to be getting it to the kids. And the student advisory members have had comments and things that I'll share when I send my questions. But thank you very much. It was really good, long, but good.
Yes. We noted everybody.
So do I call, who do I call moneybags?
Ms. Kennedy.
No, thank you very much. It is a lot. So I'm going to go back and probably delve into it a little bit more. You know, remember, I'm the realtor, so I'm relying on the educators here, and that's the professionals, y'all are that. So thank you for educating me today.
Ms. Chivinelli?
I'm going to do the same as well, because I know I took lots of little notes, and now I have to put it together with what I was thinking. But my one concern was, and it was a great presentation, however, I felt like we were speaking about what's going on this year. But remember now, tomorrow, we're going to be speaking on what's happening.
We are.
Next year, right?
We are.
So my concern is, it looks great of what we're doing now with the extended, you know, extended hours and the drill down 84 minutes, which we're not having 84 minutes. So I'm just saying, we have to think about...
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, I just have, I have one thing that's a question to get back, but a lot of times I hear parents and people in the community who are a lot, a little concerned, especially questioning...
Okay, Ms. Gittens, I'm so sorry. We cannot, Ms. Gittens, hello? Hello?
With COVID and all that last week, you can't...
You don't have it.
Ms. Gittens. Ms. Gittens.
...to high school this year. So that's a question that's out there. So...
Great question.
...way in answer to the question, so that you can know that those kids are not that far behind, that in two years, they're not going to graduate, that type of thing. So thank you.
And if you will, whatever you just asked, because we could not hear it or understand, if you would just send that, please, as well to Dr. Savage or Dr. Carlin, so that way we can collectively get all the questions that we have to ask and send it so we can get those answers this week, that would be wonderful. And thank you for participating. I had no idea that you were there. So I appreciate it, and seriously, I appreciate all of you, and thank you. I know it was long for you as well, but we do need to have the information, and you did a great job, and thank you so much.
Thank you. So for us, we wanted to make sure we highlighted for you, there are challenges, but this is where we are, and this is what we're doing. And so as you process the information, because it was a lot, please ask the questions that you want to know, because our team wants to make sure that you have all the information you need. And yes, tomorrow, there's a conversation about the high school schedule, just a high school, which doesn't impact the middle or elementary. And so whatever questions you have for that, we're going to be happy to talk about as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening, and thank you. Oh, I know Good of the Order, do you have, well, the three of us that are here, and Ms. Gittens, do you have anything for the Good of the Order?
I'll save it for tomorrow.
Yeah, I agree. Tomorrow.
Dr. Savage?
I just wanted to say, Ms. Patrica, as she was walking out, did send questions, but because the group is taking those together, we're going to, I'll make sure to aggregate all of those in with the others.
That'll be great.
To get responses.
That'll be great. And then that way as well, Ms. Morgan, who was not present, if she has questions as well, they can all be included in that. Great. Mr. Pre Bruno, did you have any?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. CNN, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.